Good evening, everybody. We have a packed agenda, so I want to make sure that we start on time. We're already running a few minutes late. With that said, can we welcome to the Ojai City Council and Ojai Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency, regular meeting 7:00 PM Tuesday, April 28, 2015. Could I have a roll call?
Councilmember Wyrick?
Here.
Councilmember Clapp?
Present.
Councilmember Haney?
Here.
Mayor Protem Blatts?
Here.
And Mayor Lara?
Here. Could I have Councilmember Wyrick lead us in the Pledge of Legions?
Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to start off with the -- before we do presentations, I want to start off with a couple of comments that Councilmember Haney requested. At this time, you may make those comments.
Good evening. I just heard about this today, and I -- my heart's beating pretty fast here right now because I just ran to get my glasses. Ken Fay, who I don't know if any of you who knew him or know him or know or knew of him, was an incredible contributor to this valley, and he passed away this weekend. So I'd just like to take a minute and maybe all of us reflect on him and what he did and what he stood for, which was this community, for a minute. Thank you.
I'm going to move on with the presentations. I'm going to start off with the Dark Sky Awards. I'm going to invite Deborah to come say a few words before I give out the awards.
Thank you, Mayor Lara. The Ojai Valley Green Coalition has aspirations of the Ojai Valley becoming a dark sky-designated community, and since 2008, we've led that charge, starting with working with the City of Ojai, to update its exterior lighting standards, which it did in 2013. Having specific regulations in place is one of the largest criteria for dark sky designation. I'm also happy to report we are in the queue for the county to consider standards for the unincorporated areas of the Ojai Valley. So now, since 2013, the Coalition has partnered with the city to help enlighten residents and businesses as to the value and importance of the standards. And let me reiterate, the standards nor our efforts have been about no lighting. It's all about appropriate lighting. Uplighting into the sky is just a complete waste of energy and obscures the sky, an important resource to this community and a downright work of art. Glare from overlighting is dangerous. Lights shining into the eyes of motorists is unsafe, and lighting up our yards and our streets to the point of glowing gives would-be criminals lots of shadows to hide in. This is backed up by documented research. Overlighting literally makes us less safe and less secure. That's part of why we thought recognizing businesses in our community who are following the standards is a great goodwill gesture and will hopefully shine further light on the city's efforts and rub off on other businesses. Last year, we recognized Nutmeg's Ojai House, the Hummingbird Inn, the Oaks at Ojai, Azu Restaurant, and the Capri Hotel. Now to recognize further businesses in our community for their model exterior lighting is Mayor Lara. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for that brief summary about why it's important to shield your lights. My first presentation is going to be No Sevita on 205 North Single owned by Felicia and Shawn Mason. The award was received by the manager, Melissa Lancher. The exterior lighting were carefully chosen for low intensity and downward use. And I do have some fancy stuff on you. Here you go. Do you want to say a couple of words?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say that we're very honored to accept this award, and we chose our lights very carefully. We chose ones that covered the bulbs completely and shining downwards so that we can enjoy our beautiful skies. Thank you.
Thank you. The second award is going to go to Ojai Playhouse on Ojai Avenue, received by Kalad Alawar. The owner for the facade of the building has fully shielded lamps, so if you could make them up.
Someday, your theater will open.
Thank you, thank you.
Actually, right now, there are no lamps. And I am very grateful for this award, and I was going to give you a very quick update. We did hit a stumbling block, and it delayed the work at the theater for at least now almost four and a half months, and I think the whole thing has been resolved, and I think we will be moving forward because everybody asked about that. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. The third award is going to go to Mob Shop on Ojai Avenue, received by Beau Lefftimberg, the owner. The lights are well placed to reduce glare to drivers and still have safety on patrons of the -- patrons, patrons, sorry, excuse me, patrons. My Spanish came in there. Spanish was my first language, so I apologize. Patrons of the bike shops. So, thank you. Thank you so much, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have something real quick to say about night skylighting. I think a lot of times, people do feel like, Deborah Pendy mentioned, that the brighter the lights, the safer you are. And it is really true that if you have subdued lighting that's shielded, you can see into the shadows, and not only that, it doesn't shine into your eyes. It really is a really simple thing that we can do to improve our community, and I think the more we do it, the more we realize the benefits, and ultimately, I think we'll all step back when we do accomplish this, and we'll look up in the sky and we'll go, you know, this was really worth it. So, I really thank the Green Coalition for spearheading the education on this because we have been led to believe that the more light, the safer we are, and it's true that it has been studied and we have discovered that that's really not necessarily the case. Thanks.
Thank you, guys. Thank all three of you. Thank you. Our second presentation is going to be a proclamation proclaiming City of Ojai as a Purple Heart City and honor the services and sacrifice of our nation's men's and women's in uniform, serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans. Whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest decoration in present use and was initially created as a badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1982, and whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldiers and is specifically awarded to any member of the United States Armed Services wounded or killed in combat with the declared enemy of the United States, and whereas the mission of the military order a Purple Heart chartered by an act of Congress is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas the City of Ojai recognizes the commitment and increases sacrifices military families are making, and on April 28, 2015, has officially been designated as a day in the City of Ojai to remember and recognize veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal, and therefore be it proclaimed that I, Severo Lara, Mayor of City of Ojai, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the City of Ojai as Purple Heart. Do we have a recipient or a -- thank you. And would you like to say a couple of words? Oh, thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lara. My name is Hugh Claybaugh, and I'm a Purple Heart recipient. I would like to thank the rest of the City Council for making Ojai a Purple Heart City. We're very honored for this, and we want to thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your service. I'm going to move on to public communications. Public communication is a time set aside during the meeting for members of the public to address the City Council's successor agency board on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the council board and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than the emergency item, no matter -- no action can be taken. Persons wishing to address the council board are requested to fill out a speaker's card prior to the council board reaching this point on the agenda. Comments must be limited to three minutes or less. I have Pat. Is it McPherson?
Hi, Pat McPherson, here in Ojai. Monday, I did a little survey. I went around the neighborhood, actually, the whole town, and for about a half hour, I found five places that were using gas blowers. And let's assume that the same number were for six hours a day, that'd be 30 a day. Now, let's assume that happens five days a week. That's 150 gas blowers, or 150 violations per week. So, why is it not on the agenda tonight? It seemed like at the last meeting, Paul had suggested we bring up the old ordinance that pertained to gas, and that was going to be on tonight's agenda. So, what happened? And that's my question to all of you. If 150 violations per week is not enough to get your attention, then what is? And the next question is, how many violations or citations did the enforcement officer issue last week? Has somebody told him not to enforce this law? If so, why don't we publish on the website all the laws that the city doesn't enforce? Thank you.
Thank you. And just to let you know, it is on the next agenda in two weeks. And also, if you would want those numbers, I don't know if we have them available, if you could -- we could check, double-check. Thank you. Deborah Moe?
I'm speaking on agenda item.
On agenda item? Not on public comment? Okay, on two?
Sorry.
That's all right. Deborah? Yeah, public comment? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Lara. Councilmembers, Deborah Pendry representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, 309 Riverside Road. The Ojai Valley Green Coalition announces Solarize Ojai Valley, a three-month-long group purchasing program designed to make going solar easier and more affordable for Ojai Valley homeowners. Our partner, the Community Environmental Council, helps guide homeowners through the entire process as an unbiased expert resource, making it as easy as possible for everyone to go solar. With CEC, the Green Coalition evaluated and vetted the installer partners for the program, and then secured from them a discounted price. Homeowners can have peace of mind knowing they're working with a reputable contractor and getting a great price. We hope even more homeowners will take advantage of our third offering of this program since 2002. Over 95 kilowatts of solar electricity generating capacity has been installed to date from this program. Homeowners who are interested in learning more about the program or signing up to get a solar proposal can visit solarizeojai.org for more information. CEC and OVGC will also host three introductory workshops where residents can learn about energy efficiency, conservation, and the Solarize program. The first one is this Thursday, which is April 30, 6:00 to 7:30, and will be at the Chaparral Auditorium, which is located at 414 East Ojai Avenue. We'll again be at the auditorium Thursday, June 4, same time, 6:00 to 7:30, and then finally, Tuesday, June 30, 6:00 to 7:30, we'll be at the Oak View Park and Resource Center, which is located at 555 Mahoney Avenue in Oak View. So again, you can visit solarizeojai.org or ojaivalleygreencoalition.org to get more information. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any more speakers cards. Would anybody like to speak on during public comments? Seeing no hands, I'm going to move on.
I have a question.
You could, if you could come up and state your name.
My name's Jeff Custel. The question I have is, the non-permitted dwellings, is that going to be on tonight's agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I'm going to move on to the consent calendar, and I'll entertain a motion if there's no items wishing to be pulled.
I move we approve items 1A, B, C, D, E, and F.
I second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is there anyone here for, I noticed that on the, on the agenda is a ratification of the 2014 Lifetime Achievement of the Arts Award. Is that something that you're going to speak to?
That's, we're going to put that on the subsequent agenda, right? Yeah, so this is ratifying, so we'll present that award.
Yeah, the award will be given, I believe, on May 26.
Any more discussion? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, not so much a discussion, but a quick clarification on item 1E2. That's the ordinance, the second reading. E2 provides that the city clerk will publish the adopted ordinance within 30 days. State law actually requires it to be published within 15 days. The ordinance is accurate, it's just not properly reflected on the agenda. It'll be 15 days.
With that change.
Accept that amendment to the motion.
Wyrick?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Blatts?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes. I'm going to move on to the agenda, but I'm going to rearrange the numbers. I usually contact the city manager and the city clerk before this, but I made a mistake. I assumed I did, and I didn't. So, I'm going to go down the list, and I'll remind you guys, I'm going to put number two to number five, number three to number six. I'm going to keep four as it is. I'm going to move five to three, six to two, and I'm going to keep seven and eight the same. So with that, I'm going to go to what's on number six, which is now number two, appointment of the Parks and Recreation Commission. And this, it was appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Do I have staff that wants to do the report, or?
No. That's what you're looking at. So this is appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. We had a commissioner resign as of April 1. We actually had interviews in December with Commissioner Haney, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilmember Haney, Parks and Recreation Chair Rylander, and then Commissioner Basor. So, at the time that the person resigned, I contacted the mayor to ask him if we could still go with the existing list. We usually keep the list for a year, and he supported that recommendation. So tonight, we appointed someone in January for vacancy, and then we went with the second person on the list, and everyone supported that, and tonight, we're asking the council to ratify the appointment of Ryan Firestone. And is he here?
Yes.
He's way back there.
Before I invite him for comments, I want to check to see if the council has any questions, comments? No? Okay, with that, I invite, I--
Invite Ryan to come up.
Invite Ryan, and do we need a motion?
Why don't we have him say a few words?
Words, okay.
And then--
Mayor Lara and the rest of council members and the community, thank you for this opportunity to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission. A community is not as great as Ojai is accidentally. It takes a lot of hard work, heart, and foresight from our government, staff, and volunteers to get here. My family and I moved to Ojai last year and love living here. We frequent the parks and enjoy the recreation programs. I'm excited to contribute to the preservation, evolution, and growth of these assets.
Great. Thank you, Ryan, and welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
Now, we'll take a motion.
Do I hear a motion?
Sure. Do you want to make the motion? Okay. Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve Ryan Firestone to serve on the Park and Recreation Commission for a term ending May 31, 2016.
Second.
Roll call.
Wyrick?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Blatts?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes.
Ryan, I'll be in touch. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm going to move to item number three, which is Planning Commission Protocols, which is supposed to be number five, and I will turn it over to staff for the report.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the City Council. This item came up at the last City Council meeting as a, as a report, and the City Council directed that it be placed on the agenda for a discussion this evening. And essentially, it's a recommendation that the council provide direction regarding planning commission pre-meetings that are being conducted at the current time. And the comment, the letter that brought it up is from Councilmember Wyrick, so he may want to take the lead in describing the situation.
Okay.
Well, I'll be very short about it because I think there's probably public comment on this that we need to listen to. And I, I think in the packet was my statement, and I think that upon reflection, my conviction has only grown more sure that I think the appropriate thing to do as a council is to engage in best practice with respect to transparency. And I just wanted to re-express again my opinion as to why having pre-meetings, which is the issue, of having staff call pre-meetings, and the situation that got my attention was having pre-meetings in sets of three commissioners at a time, in private, without notice, without any public record, is something that doesn't meet the high bar that I think we set in this community for transparency. And I believe, just to read a couple of things really quick that I've handed out to the council members and is available for the public at the table outside. The very first listing of our City of Ojai Value is, we will, it's on the back of every single City Council packet and in many other places, quote, "We will conduct our business in public so that our citizens can easily understand our processes and policies." That's the very first one. Couple other things I want to quote from the California Attorney General's Office Discussion of the Brown Act in 2003. Page nine, "There is rarely any purpose to a non-public pre-meeting conference except to conduct some part of the decisional process behind closed doors. Only by embracing the collective inquiry and discussion stages, as well as the ultimate step of official action, can an open meeting regulation frustrate these evasive devices." Those are not my words, it's the California Attorney General. And then to wind up in two more excerpts from the quotes that I prepared, as, in the context of evaluating serial meetings, in other words, what I am concerned about in terms of having these meetings called in sets of three involving the planning commissioners, the California Attorney General in this publication says, "As such, substantive conversations among members concerning an agenda item prior to a public meeting probably would be viewed as contributing to the development of a concurrence as to ultimate action to be taken. Conversations which advance or clarify a member's understanding of an issue are all examples of communications which contribute to the development of a concurrence as to action to be taken by the legislative body." And last, go into the issue of, for example, executive officers may wish to brief their members on policy decisions and background events concerning proposed agenda items. This office believes that a court could determine that such communications violate the Act because such discussions are part of the deliberative process. If these communications are permitted to occur in private, a large part of the process by which members reach their decisions may have occurred outside the public eye. Under such circumstance, the public would only be able to witness a shorthand version of the deliberative process, and its ability to monitor and contribute to the deliberate decision-making process would be curtailed. I feel strongly about this because frankly, I embrace the Brown Act, and what it means is that, in my mind, that the whole point is that it's, our deliberative processes in government are supposed to be messy. We're supposed to lay it out for the public to see. Questions that come up, issues about understandings, this is supposed to be out there for everyone to participate and understand. Nothing that I have said takes away from the ability of an individual planning commissioner, for example, to go and talk to the city manager, the community development director individually with a question. If it comes out that there are issues that need to be clarified, then a memorandum can be drafted and made part of the public record. This is what is proposed as best practice, and I think this is not just by any means a legal issue, it's a matter of transparency and, and, and living up to what we embrace, I believe, in this community, and that's setting a high bar for transparency. And that's my position, and that's why I think there should not be these pre-meetings anymore.
Any questions from council to Councilmember Wyrick or staff? Councilmember Haney?
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't have any questions, I just would like to make a statement. You know, I too have observed these meetings over the last couple of years, and I wasn't quite sure what, what they were or what they represented, other than to me, it looked like they were conducting a staff meeting, and it concerned me that we were doing it in, in private and doing it in a restaurant. It just didn't make sense. So, having said that, I do stand behind Mr. Wyrick and, and his beliefs 100%, but I also want to clarify something, too. I do not think, and I don't think any council member believes, that in the past, any of these discussions that were taking place were in any way detrimental to the ability of any planning commissioner to make a sound decision on any action that they had to vote on or act on. So I just want to make that clear also. It's, it's just, it just comes to the, it just comes to that moment that it's just not acceptable behavior. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Protem Blatts?
I have a couple of comments on this as well, having served on the Planning Commission for 10 years. And I did not go to very many of the pre-meeting conferences because I didn't feel that they were that beneficial. But I can, I can assure the public that there were no discussions of substance at those, at those lunches. They were, they were times when I did go, and of course, over 10 years, even though I didn't go very often, even if I went to three or four a year, keeping in mind that the Planning Commission meets twice a month, it's still quite a few over 10 years that I did go to. There were more clarifications on code, what's the code permits, what the, both not only the, the city code, but the building code, more, more discussions with regard to things like that. Not, I can't ever remember at any time, even though there was a, there wasn't a majority of the council members, obviously, at these meetings, which clearly, if there is a majority, it's, it's a direct violation of the Brown Act. There was never any substantive discussions on whether there was going to be an approval of the project or not an approval of the project. It was more just to look at the details of the project and discuss it from the standpoint of the, of the codes principally. Nothing, never-- Nothing, never was there a discussion of anything with regard to staff trying to convince any commissioner that I was with or myself that it should be voted on one way or the other. But even with that being said, as I said, I didn't find them particularly helpful, so I didn't attend very many of them. And I do think that it has the appearance of impropriety, even if there is no impropriety. And therefore, I can support not doing them any longer. Plus, I always thought that it was, that it was a little bit, I never was very comfortable with feeling like the city had to buy a lunch for me twice a month. And there's seven people on the Planning Commission, so that's 14 lunches a month that potentially could be bought, and I never felt that that was, I never was comfortable with that. So for that reason as well, I would be willing to support Councilman Wyrick's proposal.
I have a question for staff in regards to the procedures. Does anyone know how long this practice been going on? It just was there when you hire. Is there any, anything else the staff would like to say about these pre-meetings in terms of what kind of questions you get, or what you review, or any clarification?
No, I think Councilmember Blatts, Mayor Prodim Platts, did a good job of describing what happens. I've also been to a very few of them, and that was my experience as well.
So what I'm getting is that the main purpose of these meetings is just to help commissioners with packets prior to the meeting, a day before the meeting, if I'm clear? Okay. I do have a couple of speakers card. Councilmember Clapp, would you like to say a couple of comments? Okay. So I'm going to start off with Judy Murphy.
Hi, I'm Judy Murphy. I lived on Grand Avenue in Ojai. I think that Councilman Wyrick's comments were spot on, and I would just keep it brief and ask the council to please make sure that all of our commissions follow the Brown Act. We really want to maintain our good reputation in this city as being open and transparent for the public. Thank you.
John, sorry, Don Teeding? Don?
Good evening, Don Teeding, North Signal Street. For the past seven months, I have attended numerous Planning Commission meetings. I found information presented to the public via the written administrative reports lacking in completeness. It has always perplexed me as to how the Planning Commission could take action when sufficient information is not presented to make an informed decision. Now I know the answer. It is evident that planning commissioners are receiving information that is not available to the public. The practice of pre-meetings denies the public information that is shared with the commission alone, and the public has no guarantee that the meeting is not being used to develop a concurrence as to action to be taken. While what is happening is not a violation of the Brown Act, because the majority of commissioners are not present, it is unfair to the public and just feels wrong. Additionally, no other commission gets this special treatment. While I sincerely appreciate the dedicated service of our planning commissioners, I ask you, how does the practice of closed-session pre-meetings further the city's values of transparency, open communication, accountability, and engagement? And where is the fairness to the community, the very persons for whom the commission and the city serve? Please take whatever action is needed tonight to discontinue this unjust practice immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Mac Lijowski?
Good evening, I'm Mac Lijowski, 904 El Paso Road, Ojai, California. I've been a member of the Planning Commission for just over a year now. I find these pre-meetings to be incredibly valuable as far as going over simple points of information. I think, I think any accusations of a lack of transparency, or whatever other insinuations may have been put out there are just really, unfortunately, a politicized, I don't really understand it. We do this in plain, open public. I just feel that this has been very shocking for me. I feel that if we stop this practice, I don't know exactly what would happen. I think one result would be our Planning Commission meetings might be six hours long, we might need to do them weekly. I'm not really clear what the alternative would be. I also feel that this practice started by, it's been, from my understanding, I missed the comment, it was, I've heard it's been going on for at least 15, 20 years. I think it was instituted by a reasonable body. It's been continued through this time, it's been incredibly valuable. I think only the applicants and the city benefit from this. And I don't know, I'm just wondering if any council members have any, you know, questions for me as a planning commissioner that you'd wish to ask about this practice?
I think that, I just want to make sure I'm listening correctly, and that this main pre-meeting, the main objective is that you use it to clear some information, some questions that you have that are in the packet?
Exactly. For example, we regularly see items such as, well, design review permits, or conditional use things, variances, people want a variance, they want to put their garage, or they want to build a new garage here. Well, this is just our opportunity to ask, well, in this zone, does the setback need to be five feet, does it need to be 10 feet? You know, we, these are just simple information gathering items of facts from staff who, you know, might not have time to put them in their report beforehand. So that's, yeah, to answer your question, it's...
And just a quick question to staff, is any planning commissioner available to make meetings with Ms. Wool, or any other planning officer or employee?
Of course.
To get clarification?
Yeah.
Okay.
Planning commissioners and any commissioners can meet with their liaisons.
Okay. All right. Any further questions for Mr. Lijowski? No? Okay.
Thanks.
Rosalini Zabala? Zabala?
Mayor Lara, I'm going to respectfully request that you give me a couple of extra minutes, if possible, as a commissioner. I've got several comments I'd like to make, and I'd really appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, I'm Rosalina Zabala, I live in the city. I was appointed to the Planning Commission a year ago. During that time, I have attended to two meetings nearly every month, as well as several joint meetings, joint workshops, and special meetings. The matters before us have been complicated and often contentious. We have successfully reviewed and advanced issues as diverse as a cell tower ordinance and large commercial developments. When I was originally briefed on the requirements of the job, I was told there were two meetings per month and a breakfast or lunch meeting with Ms. Wald, our development director. A little background on these pre-meetings, the purpose is to ask Ms. Wald questions, and attendance at them has been an expected part of the position for years. The cost of the meals has been a line item in the annual budget, approved by the City Council year after year. At the first pre-meeting, Ms. Wald clarified what we three commissioners could and couldn't discuss in conformance with the Brown Act. She further cautioned that neither we nor she could discuss with any of the other commissioners what happened at our meeting, thereby avoiding a serial meeting. These meetings have without a doubt been the most cost-efficient and effective way for the city to help prepare commissioners, as well as the best way for staff to know when additional research and documentation is needed prior to the regular meeting. And the proof is in the pudding. Every Planning Commission meeting has been attended by at least one council member, and without fail, we have been complimented on a job well done. It had been my impression that the City Council and the Planning Commission enjoyed a good working relationship. So imagine the shock at receiving Mr. Wyrick's letter to the commission on April 15th suggesting, in the most accusatory tone, that our pre-meetings were inappropriate, that we were behaving inappropriately. Unlike the respect you have accorded to other commissions, we were not offered a joint meeting to discuss the matter, nor to put it on our own agenda so we could discuss amongst ourselves and provide you a statement as a whole. Instead, we have had to come here, taking more time from our families and jobs, to ensure our input is included in the conversation about us. Mr. Wyrick's letter repeatedly references two things: taxpayer-paid meals and lack of transparency. To that, I say, people in glass houses shouldn't throw stones. Mr. Wyrick's letter, sorry, council members receive thousands of dollars in compensation each year in the form of monthly stipends and full health insurance. Planning commissioners receive two working meals a month. Grandstanding about protecting the taxpayer dime makes for a great soundbite, but sure seems hypocritical. So then there's the issue of transparency. I know the city attorney has already indicated the meetings are not a violation of the Brown Act. Mr. Wyrick's point that appearances are important is certainly valid, but where's the cost-benefit analysis? Why write such an inflammatory and disrespectful letter without bothering to get all the facts? And then it occurred to me that this was possibly all by design, that all this overblown moral outrage on the part of four people is a ruse designed to discredit the members of the Planning Commission as part of a larger plan to do what people often like to do in politics, consolidate power and control. There's an adage that says, "When one finger is pointed at me, three are pointed back at you." With that in mind, I asked Mr. Clark to include in the staff report any emails related to this issue sent or received by City Council. When that request revealed, what that request revealed was deeply disturbing, but certainly provided illuminating context for Mr. Wyrick's letter. I don't have time to parse all three emails. They're included in the staff report and are available online. But taken as a whole, these emails lie, they name-call, they defame our character, and they discredit the incredibly hard work we have done on behalf of the city with zero evidence that there is any problem whatsoever. Two of the individual authors, Mr. Orick and Mr. Dadi, hold official positions as members of the Building Appeals Board, power you gave them. That Mr. Duar, the publisher of the Ojai Valley News, is looped into this propaganda is alarming and shameful. Bottom line, the Planning Commission doesn't have a transparency problem, you do. There are no doubt a mountain more of these emails. So what to do? People who have worked at the city and otherwise been involved over the years say the environment created by this type of behavior has turned City Hall toxic. You, as City Council members, need to take control of the situation and the conversation, and stop allowing yourselves to be puppet-mastered by people we did not elect. You need to create stability and civility, and try to see what can actually be improved, rather than allowing the constant tearing down of staff and commission members. As president-elect of the Board of Realtors, I will be continuing to apprise our membership, over 200 individuals strong, of progress in this regard. I love this valley, and I presume you do, too. It takes strength and a strong moral compass to put the interests of a community ahead of your own. I invite everyone involved in this matter to consider your own responsibility and figure out how you can make amends, or forgive, or otherwise endeavor to change the climate at City Hall. I hope we can all move forward in a productive and positive fashion. Ball's in your court. Thank you.
Please hold our applause. Just like to keep it consistent for every person that comes up to the podium. Kathy Nolan?
Good evening, council members. Kathy Nolan, 340 Avenue to De La Vereda, Ojai, and I also am Planning Commissioner. I feel honored that I was appointed as a Planning Commissioner, and I've been here giving my service for a little over six years. And I wanted to say that I too agree with my fellow commissioners that actually came up and spoke. I've had, let's see, I've been working with, gee, I think, three community development directors, and actually several interim directors. And there's always been full transparency, there's always been clear communication about what can be said and what cannot be said. And I also like to say that being a Planning Commissioner is a huge job. There's a lot of information, some of it overlaps with what I do personally in work, but there's a lot of it that's new, I'm constantly learning. And I have so appreciated having those, the lunch or the breakfast meetings, which are held, you know, in the public space, we're actually in a restaurant, we're not behind closed doors somewhere. But it gives us the opportunity to maybe ask for clarification on something, not necessarily a specific item or a project that we're working on, but just how things are operated, how to look at something in the code or what have you. I also, you know, I respect you, I respect your opinion, but I did feel that the tone of that letter was a little jabbing. We work for you, I would hope that somehow through staff you could have come to us if there were some complaints or something, and approached us in a little bit different manner, maybe with a little more respect. I plan to continue on as a Planning Commissioner. Once again, like I said earlier, I feel like I operate in high integrity and honor, and take this very seriously. So I would just hope that you could look at it, and maybe from our shoes. Number one, we didn't initiate this. Commissioner Zabala had mentioned, when I first started Planning Commission, I said, you know, what are my obligations? And of course, you know, they said, two Wednesday nights, and you'll have a pre-meeting, so that you can come, you know, and ask questions, you know, after you've gone out to the side or you've read through your packet. So I just took that as okay, not that it was violating the Brown Act or that I was, you know, using taxpayers' dollars inappropriately to have a meal. So, once again, please, I hope you can come to us with respect and from a place honoring what we do, and knowing that we're working for you and not against you, and not against the city. I don't think that's any of our intentions. Thank you for your time. And actually, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Does anybody on the council have questions for Ms. Nolan, Kathy Nolan? No? I do. I, being, you being one of the, one of the longest Planning Commissioners right now on that commission, I, just real quick, how long have you been?
I started in, I think it was February 2010.
February 2010, okay. And so from February 2010, and now we're February, April 2015, so it's been five years. You're saying that each time you participate in those pre-meetings, you do have questions with clarifying codes and simple, is there, is there that much difference in applications that come through the Planning Commission, or the Planning Department?
I mean, as far as the information that we're getting?
Yeah, as far as information, yeah.
Well, at times, there has been information missing from our packets, and I'm sure that you are aware that that has been going on for, I don't know, a little while. So that's been an issue. But another thing is, I've actually, I'm still cheering, well, fully cheering, to subcommittees that I've been doing since I started in 2010. And a lot of times, that's an opportunity for me to ask a question about maybe something I'm doing in one of those subcommittees. They both have always been held here at City Hall, the public is invited, it's not behind closed doors. So it's given me an opportunity, and it's also given my other fellow commissioners who may be sitting at the meeting, just a little idea of what we're doing in the committee. I always give a committee report, and of course, once again, I have several members of the public and have continually who have been very active, and I'm so appreciative on those committees. So I just kind of feel like it's been a place to ask, a lot of times, general questions. Once again, I, you know, this is, being a commissioner is a big job, there's a lot of information to know, and it's that, that time where we can, you know, feel like can ask a question. I feel like it does economize on time, because there's three of us at the meeting typically, I mean, sometimes there's less if somebody can't show up. But, you know, I feel like we're all, you know, we all take an ethics class every, I think it's every two years, you know, we swear to, you know, operate ethically, and, you know, I don't take that lightly, and I don't feel like my other commissioners do either.
Do you think if the public was present in those pre-meetings, if we were to notice those meetings, do you think it would give the outcome of that meeting, would it, would it be different if the community could participate, or just sit in those pre-meetings?
You know, I, I wouldn't be opposed to doing it. I think that, you know, I know it would have to be agendized, and I believe that it may want to be stipulated that it's only for a certain block of time, and maybe there's some sort of a format. In other words, if there were a lot of other questions about other items that were in that packet, that we may not have our opportunity to address what we specifically came for, or any generalized things. But I wouldn't be opposed to, I mean, I know we do have people that pop in and say hi, of course, they're not standing there and participating, but... of course, they're not standing there and participating, but members of the public do know that we're there, and recognize that we're there, so.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? No?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Jim Richmond.
My name is Jim Richmond, I'm a resident of Ojai, and I just wanted to come up here to say thank you so much to the members of the planning commission for devoting so much hard time and effort to all the applications that come forward. These applications can be very complicated, and require a great deal of time for anybody to understand them, and to arrive at a set of reasonable questions to ask in open session. So if anything, I would say I strongly support lunches for the planning commission, so that they can have these meetings, and learn about each application, and it's a pittance, and no one should be concerned about buying a lunch for a planning commission by the city. Thank you.
Alizar Coin.
Yes, he's coming up.
Hi, my name's Alister Coin. Thank you for bringing this matter to the council's attention today. I've attended a couple of planning commission meetings recently, and watched a few more on TV at a later date, and something that struck me is how little discussion there has been at those meetings, they may not be representative, how little discussion has been between the board members and staff. And finding out that planning commissioners are meeting separately with city staff before the meetings kind of explains that. They've brought up their questions, they've sounded out their thoughts, and had them answered already. And so, members of the public that attend those planning commission meetings are left in the dark as to what went on, what good questions were asked. The public should know what good questions are being asked, that the planning commission, at the beginning of the meeting, have already had answered. The public should also know if planning commissioners ask stupid and dumb questions. The public should know that, too. The public should be aware of the matters that are brought up in discussions between city staff and planning commissioners, that lead them to make their decisions, and come to a position and take a vote. And there may, may not be any kind of collusion in this process, but there's certainly the appearance of it. Obviously, the meetings are with not enough of the planning commission to be in violation of the Brown Act, but still, I would expect the planning commissioners to have their questions ready, and ask them in the public forum, that is, the planning commission meeting, which is what it's there for, where the public's invited. I mean, one part of me said, well, invite the public to these lunches, let them buy their own lunch, but who has time, you know, in the middle of the day to go and attend a planning commission lunch with city staff? This should all be in the public. That's what public meetings are for. Thank you very much.
Steve Foster.
Good evening, council members, staff. I just arrived, so I may be repeating some of the things you already heard, but I'll move forward in that respect. In reading Councilmember Wierich's handout, several words stand out to me, and I'll read them in the order that I see through the sentences and paragraphs here. Streamlined, taxpayer expense, shortened meetings, transparency, paid for by the taxpayers, taxpayer expense, taxpayer paid, and again, transparency. So when it comes to the question of streamlining and shortened meetings, in all the years I've served on the planning commission, whether current or past, I've never known any of the commissions not to take the amount of time required to adequately review and render a decision, never. More to the point for me is the question, how can we be most efficient at what we are charged to do? Typically, we receive our packets on Friday for the following Wednesday meeting. It's a few days. Now, like all of you, all of us either are self-employed or are employees. I believe that you can appreciate the value of good time management. I hope you can appreciate the value of the pre-meeting, and the efficiency to provide answers versus making several phone calls to the community development director on Monday and Tuesday, which, by the way, I do make those phone calls when necessary. So call it streamlining. For sure, it's not about shortening our meetings. I prefer the term "being efficient." That's how I see it. All this begs the question, though, what is the purpose and true value of the pre-meeting? Well, I know it's not about coming together to form predetermined consensus of opinions prior to the hearing of a public meeting. What it is about is information, it's about fact-finding, it's about determining the legal boundaries with which we have to work with. It's not about coming together in some covert or clandestine fashion way to pursue a personal agenda. The whole intent of the pre-meeting is to grasp a better understanding of the matter at hand, so we can be informed, balanced decisions, and determinations. That's why we do this, which is what we have been charged to do. Finally, just concerning the, the cost of the lunch or breakfast, I'm willing to go with whatever the council would deem fit in its terms. To me, I'll buy my own lunch, I'll buy my own breakfast. But it's important that we have the ability to recognize the value, not only for the planning commission, what these meetings bring to the table, but to the city as a whole. Folks, this is about information, that's it. It's not about exchanging opinions, it's not personal agendas, it's about getting information, so we can make balanced, just decisions. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Foster? No? I, just a quick question that occurred to me, how long are these pre-meetings usually?
How long are the, I'm sorry?
How long are the pre-meetings?
Usually about an hour, sometimes an hour and a half, depending on the thickness of the packets, the agenda items.
Okay.
And there are times, I don't know if it was mentioned, that we do not have pre-meetings, because the agenda is that slim, and there's no necessity, there's no necessity to do it. So, keep that in mind as well.
Thank you.
Okay? Thanks.
Randy, I can't read the last name, Levitt?
Yes.
Levitt.
I'm actually here for a different item, but I have some personal experience with this, and I thought it would be of some value. As I, I applied to be on the city council, city, no, city planning commission, and I was told during my interview that there would be these additional meetings, and that the purpose of those meetings was to circumvent the Brown Act. I was told, my recollection of the meeting, meetings were that information would be shared between planning department members, and my recollection also is that, yes, that there would be some sort of consensus that might, that might happen. And so I just wanted to share that. A simple solution, although it's more difficult for the public, is to continue with the meetings, but just invite the public, say what's going to be discussed, let interested people go and attend. I don't see, you know, the arduousness of that. I just wanted to share that with you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else from the public wanting to talk? Yes, Carol Smith.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see you all. I am Carol Smith, Mayor Emeritus of Ojai. It's a tough decision. The planning commission works with no benefit. Maybe they will get their tuition paid to a conference. I think the answer to the question of whether the public should be, basically, are invited to these meetings is very simple. Have an announced meeting, where the, basically, community development director can address all the council members, all the planning commission members, and the public is invited. Have one in the morning, and have one in the evening. That would basically address, I think, all of Council Wierich's issues, that public is invited. It is an informational meeting. We have to realize that our planning commission, our H&amp;P commission, everything, they have absolutely no benefits from doing it. They serve because they love Ojai. I do not doubt that all of you serve because you love Ojai. However, you also get a salary, and more important, if you want it, you can sign up for health insurance, which can be worth anywhere from $18,000 to $25,000 of the taxpayers' insurance money. The planning commission gets nothing, the H&amp;P gets nothing, all the other commissions get nothing. So you have to recognize that they are doing it for a pure love of Ojai, and I'm not saying that you don't. But you do get benefits that are not, that the general public is not aware of. I really suggest that you do the open meetings, maybe twice, with planning commission, one in the morning, and one in the, late in the evening, that the public is invited for, and that the community development director is there, and the public is invited, so we have none of the problems that Council Wierich alluded to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wanting to speak? I'm going to, seeing no hands, I'm going to turn it back to council for deliberation or discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Clapp.
I've been thinking about this for two weeks, and haven't been sleeping well because of it. I think the thing that disturbs me most is the method in which this was brought before council. Whether or not this was a valid discussion to bring forward, maybe it is, maybe it isn't. Maybe it should have been brought forward as a discussion. But the manner in which it was brought forward was insulting, accusatory, it was, it was destructive, it attacked the character of our planning commissioners. That's what disturbs me about it. I never object to discussing a policy. I think that's part of democracy. I've been thinking a lot about democracy recently, because I think we use that term lightly, but I love Winston Churchill, and Winston Churchill said, "Democracy is the worst form of government, except for all the others." I just think that is genius, because democracy is messy, it's very messy, and this is an example of it right now. And I think one of the ways we could have made this less messy is if it was brought forward in a more respectful manner. We have meetings, I want to say with the planning commission.
In May, second meeting in May.
In second meeting in May. To me, it would have been respectful and more appropriate to bring that forward as an item of concern, if the council felt they wanted to have this as a discussion. Explain the concerns to the planning commission, and have a dialogue, a respectful dialogue. This did not come out in a respectful way. It's caused hurt feelings, it's impugned the character of our planning commissioners, and for that, I'm very, I'm appalled. It was also, one of the things that's been, been hollered from the mountaintops is transparency. And I think transparency is a very, very critical term, but it's also becoming a very jaded term, and very overused. There's nothing stopping three planning commissioners from meeting at any time, anywhere. A pre-arranged pre-meeting, or any time, anywhere. Any planning commissioner, any council member can meet two at a time, any planning commissioner, three at a time, and if they so choose, they can be as corrupt as they want to be. You're never going to stop corruption. We need to have confidence in the people that we appoint to these bodies, and respect their integrity. This was not respecting their integrity, and for that, I am ashamed. This also was stimulated by an email, which Rosalie Zabella requested be included in our packet, and I think it's very telling. This is what really, really troubled me more than anything, because it came from a member of another board, another, another body that is appointed by this council. They work at our pleasure, is how they put it in the terminology of city government, basically where they're employers. Another, two members of another body that this city council has appointed have attacked, in an untransparent way, another body of this city government. They've insulted them, they've accused them, behind closed doors, at the same time screaming for transparency. This is duplicitous. I'm going to, I'm going to read a couple of statements in one of the emails. This is from William Ulrich, who serves on the Building Appeals Board. "Please note that the architects and landscape architects on the planning commission, who routinely have projects in which they have a financial interest before the commission, these meetings are an opportunity to 'explain,' quote-unquote, their projects, and potentially influence the vote outcome, even if they recuse themselves from the actual public vote." How insulting. "The planning commission, as presently constituted, while not merely failing to read and comprehend their own packets, or fail to request further necessary and often missing information and documentation from staff, are engaged in actions that are an abomination to transparency, and undermine, undermine the due process and equal protection elements of the public's In one breath, they're saying they're not educated, and the next breath, they're saying, "We don't want you to get together and get educated." There's also a comment about myself. Now, I, I'm hesitant to read it, but at the same time, I think it's germane. The reason I'm hesitant to read it is because I'm a publicly elected figure, and I understand that I'm fair game. People can say whatever they want about me, and I understand that, and I accept that in the position I'm in. But I, I got to say, I still kind of resent being somebody lying about, about me. "Please do not overlook the invitation, interestingly enough, invitation, and participation of Ms. Clapp in these meetings as council liaison, which may provide cover and tacit approval for these activities. Is this desirable to the other members of the council? We all rotate as liaison, every quarter. Every one of us participates as a liaison. Never once, I don't think of any of us, had an invitation to a lunch, nor have any of us ever, to my knowledge, attended a lunch at a pre-meeting. Nor has Mr. Clark, well, he's not mentioned here, never mind, disregard that. I've struggled with this for two weeks, because, in a way, I'm speechless. I don't sound like I'm speechless now. I came here tonight not knowing what I'd say, because we have seven people on this planning commission to devote a tremendous amount of time to this community for nothing, a lousy breakfast and lunch. Let's throw them a bone. Excuse me." I think that's pittance compared to what they give this community, and it's insulting to say it's a waste of taxpayer dollars, the time they devote, the things that they contributed to this community, the effort that they put out, and the love and devotion they have for this, for this community for a lunch or a breakfast, excuse me. We owe them more than that. Sometimes I even feel we owe them health care. We all deserve decent health care. To move on, we have city values, and this is back to these emails. And there are more of these emails, Ms. Commissioner Zabella mentioned, I suspect there's more of these emails. Yes, there are, folks, there's lots of these emails. I've received them, and there equally is, or more, insulting, derogatory, inflammatory, aggressive, vicious emails as well, that are circulating in this community in an untransparent manner, tempting, assaulting our staff, assaulting our city manager, calling for the dismissal of our city manager. of our city manager. This is undermining the morale of this city hall. It's undermining our commissioners, and it ultimately will seep out into the community and undermine the community. I find this objectionable, and I take great offense to it. A few years ago, we had a, what do you call it, a goal-setting session. It was great. Mr. Blatz, I believe, was there as, were you, Sarah? It was just before you were there.
Yeah.
We had a council, um, goal-setting session, and in that meeting, Mr. Bla- Councilman Blatz, I'm sure recalls, we came up with the city Ojai values. And, um, yes, transparency was one of them. But also, one of the values that we included was respect. "We will respect, be respectful and considerate of each other and all those we serve." This is not a respectful behavior. And to be operating from behind closed doors, to agitate and undermine this organization, to demoralize this, this city and, and, and take up valuable staff time with this kind of nonsense, disrupts our ability to do positive things in this community, which are many. We have re-roofed this city hall, we've redone the recreation center, we have redone our museum, we have newly paved roads. I could go on and on and on of what this city council and this city staff.
It's a waste of time.
Please, could you please hold your comment?
That this staff and this council have accomplished. And I would like to focus on what we have accomplished, the positive things we have accomplished, and, and have a positive environment in this city hall, a positive attitude towards our staff, a respectful attitude towards our staff, and I want a respectful attitude between all of our commissions to one another. We don't have that right now. That's all I have to say.
Just real quick, I, I know, I want to respect the time because there is other items on the agenda. So I just, to clarify, I'm going to take notes to see where we're at as a council and what we want to direct staff in this discussion item. What I got, Betsy, obviously you don't like the approach that this was brought up, you're for, uh, ta- or putting it with the joint meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then focusing, you don't have an issue with, with having the commission be giving lunch or, or breakfast?
I want to have a joint meeting with this commission and hopefully during that meeting, repair some of the ill feelings that have developed between this organization, between these bodies.
So you'd be for putting a, with the joint, on the agenda of the joint meeting?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. Councilmember Wyrick?
I'm going to be very short. First of all, a lot of people were being quoted that were not me. And I want, I think the issue is to focus on what is the best practice, not who people are, if their feelings have been hurt. It's an issue of what is the best practice. You know, it shouldn't be personal, and I haven't been bringing up as a personal matter. And I just want to repeat that if information is being developed that's not in a public meeting, that is an, an issue with respect to transparency. I think it's a good idea for the citizens to be able to watch and see the back and forth about the matters of law and code and case law. That's part of the public education. That's a good thing. And just to repeat, because I think the idea is that we need to look at is that it's our job as council to set the protocol for how commissioners deliberate. That's, that's it. It's our responsibility. And to quote a, a phrase from the California Municipal Law Handbook, "Substantive staff briefings contain risk and may be difficult to defend." And again, there was a fair amount of discussion of example about how this pre-meeting provided a, served the purpose of developing understanding, providing information. Again, to quote the Attorney General of the State of California, "Conversations which advance or clarify a member's understanding of an issue are all examples of communications which contribute to the development of a concurrence as to action to be taken." Again, I think the issue is clear if looked at as a purely objective analysis, that best practice is not served by, by having pre-meetings that are not accessible to the public.
Okay. So you're for, are you, do you want to table it, to have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, or you rather stop this practice and, and develop another practice that would invite the public? Or where would you?
I think we should stop the practice of non-notice pre-meetings.
Okay, great.
Immediately.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Haney?
Um, well, thanks for bringing me into this one, huh?
If you have no comments.
No, I have a comment. I, you know, personally, I'd like to see us continue this discussion with the Planning Commission and, and ultimately come to a conclusion that supports both bodies and our expectations of how we conduct meetings. That's what I would choose to do.
Okay. Mayor Paul Tim Blatz?
Yeah. Um, you know, having, having the benefit, and I believe the only benefit of anybody on this commi- on this council that's participated for quite some time on the Planning Commission, I take what the planning commissioners say with a great deal of importance. And, uh, many of them, Commissioner Foster, Commissioner Merk, were on the Planning Commission when I was on the Planning Commission. I was on for ten years, and then I wasn't on it for five, so these people have been on the Planning Commission for fifteen years or so. And as, as the ex-mayor of Ojai said, Carl Smith, "They serve without any remuneration whatsoever and were to be very grateful for their service." And I truly feel that way. I have two, I have, I have two thoughts, and sometimes my legal mind gets in front of other things, but sometimes I look at it and say, "Why are we complaining about something if it's, if it's purely legal?" And it's purely legal for these meetings to go on. There's nothing that anybody can bring to bear that's going to say it's an illegal, it's an illegal meeting. It's not. Having lived through them, I can, I can tell you that knowing the personalities on the Planning Commission, that they're not trying to circumvent the Brown Act. And I can't even fathom anybody saying to a prospective commissioner that we have these meetings to circumvent the Brown Act. That is inconceivable to me. Yet, with that being said, things change, and these meetings have gone on for fifteen or twenty years, and they do serve a purpose. So one side of me says, if they're serving a purpose, they mean that much to the commissioners, and they're legal, then why do we want to change anything? They seem to be doing well. But then the other side of me says, we're in a different environment in our community right now. We've had several things that have gone on, which we ourselves feel like we need to be totally transparent on. We've had a cell tower issue that's come to light. We've had other projects that have come to light, that they have, they, the public could have the impression that certain things could be done by these meetings, even though they're not being done. And that's the appearance of impropriety. So, you know, I, I, I have no problem putting it over to, to when we can meet with the Planning Commission, but my, my underlying feeling is that sometimes things change. This is 2015. At this point in time, we can probably get the same information to the planning commissioners another way besides them having a pre-meeting lunch, and then there's no question about the, the impropriety of the meetings. And as Councilwoman Clapp said, if three of them want to get together in a bar and conspire against a project, there's nothing that says they can't get together. Perfectly legal. So if they have to do that more, if they're, if, if, if there's that type of person on our Planning Commission, or people on the Planning Commission, it's going to show up a lot quicker than it is them discussing something at one of these, these pre-meeting lunches. But even with that, even with that feeling, you know, I have, I think that this council, more than any council that I've ever seen in Ojai, having been here for over thirty-two years, this council, transparency, as trite as that word may be coming, it means a lot to us. And if there's something that's going on that the community's concerned about, then let's find a better way to do it so that it doesn't look like we're not being transparent. I can, I can go either way. If the council wishes to put this over, I'm more than happy to support that. If we were going to vote on it tonight, I'm, I could support it. I could, I could go along with end voting on it tonight as well.
Okay, great.
I'm, I'm fine with this. If we want to, I have, I do not object that we put this on the agenda for the workshop with the Planning Commission. It might be a good discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Clapp?
Thank you, Councilwoman Wyrick, because to me, that was my main objection, is the method in which this was done. I would like to have it be a group discussion, respecting one another in a, in a more amicable manner. I'm, I'm not saying that it shouldn't be a discussion. I've never said it shouldn't be a discussion. So I really thank you for being willing to put it on to a, to the joint meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. And I, I thank you for all the commissioners that came out today and for the input that the public had on this, on this item. I, I look at this simply as a practice. I, I, I respect the planning commissioners. I understand that their packets, it is thick sometimes, and it, it comes with a lot of technical language, and that's, at times, changing, uh, over the years, and our codes are being looked at as, as policy board, so I do get that, and they don't get compensated. So my issue has never been buying them lunch, buying them breakfast, or giving them some type of, uh, just, uh, thank you, whether it be bent, a, a little money or, or just paying, uh, paying for them to go to training. That, to me, is, is acceptable for what the work they do. And being a former Park and Recreation Commission, I also understand, we all, we don't get that. We don't get the benefit of, of getting, well, and somebody brought up our salary, but we really, it's a stipend of four seventy-five, and it's not too much more. So I understand the beh- uh, health benefit is, so I don't argue that. In terms of practice, though, I remember, and I've always stressed, setting up the best practice possible. Remember, we've changed our form of interviewing for commissioners, to have all the commissioners there, have deliberate in front of them. Again, we've changed the process to be more transparent. Cell Tower, with this new ordinance, we're pushing the law in terms of noticing people and having be transparent. I am all about transparency, and I don't think that, uh, personally, I don't think that the letter was, was that aimed for a specific commissioner. It was just questioning the practice. And I'm, I'm sorry that there's been other emails apparently going around insulting other commissioners, whatever, but that does come with the, sometimes with, with this type of government agency. We had that with the cell tower issue. We had that with a couple of other issues that people weren't fond of, either one of us, one of us or other commissioners. So that, I mean, I'm sorry that goes on, but I, I, I accept it's part of, it's part of giving your time as a government-elected official or a commissioner. But I look at it, I have no issue, and I, again, I respect the commissioners' comments, and the purpose of this pre-meeting is to, truly information. I absolutely support that, a hundred percent. If we're talking about efficiency, I'd rather notice this type of meeting, have the six commissioners there, ask questions to Kathleen, whether it's an hour, an hour and a half, two hours, have the public here serve appetizers, dinners, whatever, or, or give another type. But I think that's, to me, I would be for ending the pre-meetings tonight just for that reason. I'm not, I'm not saying that they're conspiring. I've never thought they were. But to me, I've always held myself to the highest bar in terms of best practices, and, and I expect my fellow commissioners to do the same, whether regardless of Planning Commission, Park and Recreation Commission, Historical Preservation Commission, or the Arts Commission, or the Buildings Appeals Board. So I'm fine if the, if the council wants to put this as agenda to, with the Planning Commission, but to be honest with you, it's not really, in my opinion, we understand where they're coming from already. So I don't know if we're going to get any benefit from discussing that dialogue right now. To me, it would be a decision for the council to take, if we want some more input from them, from a Planning Commission meeting, for them to give us, and maybe we could deliberate on a better method, we can. But again, I, I, I don't want to beat around the bush. I want to get straight to the point, and if we could best help them with their information and do it right now, I'm, I'm more than willing to just end this and then come back with another item in the later date to talk about how we could support them. But if the, if the majority of the council wishes to put it on the next agenda meeting, at the joint meeting, I, I'm more than happy to do that, too. So.
Mayor Lara, the only reason why I think it might be a good idea, and I, I am one that doesn't like to just push decisions down the road, if we can make a decision, I'd just as soon make it, is if we're going to change it, I would appreciate getting the commission's input on how best to change it. That's, that's, that's my thinking. Instead of us just saying, okay, we're going to not do it this way anymore and have no process in, in the works to say what we're going to do, whether we're going to do anything at the end, I don't know. But I, I would appreciate the commissioner's input as to whether we're just going to do away with them altogether, or we're going to do it a different way, which can have some sort of public input.
Okay, great.
And I think that's a fair point, because I, I've, I have seen other deliberative bodies where they have noticed pre-meetings along the line of what you mentioned, that are, you know, could be right here in this council chamber, could be recorded, would be a source of information. They're, the, no decisions happen. They are there just for Q and A, but it's in front of the public. I've seen deliberative bodies do that, and I think that's worthy of discussion with the Planning Commission on that sort of idea. So I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Would you support that? Councilmember Haney and Councilmember Clapp? Yeah? Okay. Well, then we'll put it on the joint meeting as an agenda item to talk to planning commissioners. So thank you, guys. Thank you for being patient. Item Municipal Code, we're going to go with the original for Municipal Code Ordinance Text Amendment, TA fifteen dash zero two, to modify the city of the Ojai Municipal Code, Section ten dash two point five zero three, Table two point four, allowed uses and permit requirements for commercial and manufacturing zoning districts, M one. And I'll turn it over to staff for a report.
Thank you. This is item number four, I believe, and, um, our Community Development Director Kathleen Wald will make the presentation.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So we are doing, am I correct, we're doing item four?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So before you tonight is Municipal Code Text Amendment, TA fifteen dash oh two, to modify the city of Ojai's Municipal Code, Section ten dash two point five oh three, Table two point four, which is the allowable uses and permit requirements for commercial and manufacturing zoning districts, the M one zone district. And at your February tenth, twenty fifteen, meeting, City Council directed staff to review the purpose of the M one zoning district and the allowed and disallowed land uses in the zone district, specifically office uses. Currently, the only office use allowed in the M one zone district by right is a real estate office. So we have reviewed the inconsistency in the allowed office uses as other, and to the standard that, you know, other office types currently not allowed but are no more objectionable to those or detrimental to the general welfare than a real estate office. And thus, it is the city's desire to legitimize said uses either by right or through the conditional use permit process. So we have at, we have asked, or, or I should say, the Municipal Code amendment we've proposed is to add the word offices to medical services, clinical laboratories, so it would read medical services, clinical. so it would read medical services, clinical laboratory offices, and to indicate under the column labeled permit required, that a conditional use permit would be required for medical services, uh, clinical laboratory offices. Add the descriptive phase, non-medical and businesses to offices professional and administrative, such that this service would be listed as offices, business, professional and administrative parentheses, non-medical in parentheses, and place a P under that column labeled permit required, indicating that the use is allowed by right. And then delete Section ten dash two point three six oh two, O two B, uh, fourteen, photography and commercial art studios, and renumber accordingly. So, um, section, I should preface by giving you a little explanation. Section ten point two three six oh two is in the definitions section. So we're trying to make this all into the, the whole zoning code internally consistent, both the definitions that already existed in the zoning code, the purpose statement of both the zone district and the uses that can, that can be under that, um, in the table for allowable and conditionally allowable uses. So we've taken this, um, table, which is kind of just a little excerpt of what we use day in and day out, Table two point four, and we've just shown you in a, in a graphic form what it will look like. And then below it, we have the, the definition as it currently, um, is in the zoning text, and then what it would look like in the definition. So all of it is consistent. We've also provided for you that we have reviewed the general plan consistency, and, and for those of you know what we do, and I know you just had a belabored discussion about how technical it is, when you go to change a use in a zone district, you have to look at the vertical consistency of these documents, the general plan being the city's constitution, or the foundation of how we form our rules and regulations. And so we have to go all the way back to the purpose statement of the commercial manufacturing designation and make sure that it does, it is, what we're doing is consistent vertically with that top regulation. Falling down the vertical row, it would be then to the zoning consistency, which is a purpose statement in the M one zone district, and then, um, uh, making sure that what we're doing is, is, is ultimately consistent with our most, in the supreme document, which is the general plan. I'd just like to point out, because I think I, in the last paragraph on the issues that we, we determined when going through this, just gets to the point that part of the goal of the city council was to make sure that we were broadening the uses of the M one district, and in particular, those in the Bryant Circle area. Just like to point out that while the Bryant Circle area is zoned M one, it does not have a general plan designation of CM, but rather MPD. If you follow the rules and regulations, and again, I don't wanna belabor the part of being technical, but the technical under the state law requires that general plans are the lead document, zoning must be consistent with the general plan, and in this case, it is not. So regardless of whether or not we re, we change this zone text and add the descriptors and the uses of M one, it will not change it for those folks who are on the Bryant Circle, because they are technically zoned M one, but we cannot use M one, because that would be putting zoning before the general plan. Ergo, they really fall under the use tables of MPD. So in order for us to bring this into consistency, you must direct staff to bring back or rezone to that Bryant Circle area, making it MPD. Now, I know that's all really complicated, and maybe I should put a graph together for you, but that is very typical of what we do in the planning, um, in the Community Development Department. So, um, with that, um, I just provide for you our analysis and environmental review. We did an initial study, and, you know, caused, had that circulated pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. We then provide you with a fiscal impact for this, and, you know, we put together, I put together kind of an approximate, approximate, uh, cost for this. We do like to always present that text amendments are expensive due to the, um, the routing of an initial document and an initial study, you know, as you may or may not be aware, there's, um, state of California requires a filing fee of over two thousand dollars just for us to file a negative declaration. So when we're doing these council-sponsored projects, there is rather a, a large cost to them when we, we get down to it, especially, we like to aggregate, staff normally would like to aggregate them together, so we're doing one environmental document, and making that cost kind of, you know, economies of scales for lots of, um, text amendments. But in this case, this one went kind of on its own. So with that, I'm open to any questions you may have. I hope I didn't go too fast.
Any questions? Yes, Councilmember Haney?
I just wanna clarify something. Uh, Mr. Howard, I have property on Bryant Street Circle, so should I recuse myself from this conversation?
The property, well, I don't know if you wanna get into a dialogue now, perhaps a side conversation, but if the property is, you say you own it, you have tenants, it's a source of income to you, it's real property, is it gonna be affected by this?
Um, Bryant Circle is not, uh, we're doing M one, and it won't be M one, it will be MPD, provided, yeah.
We're not changing the zoning of Bryant Circle?
Not with this application.
This, this application will not change it?
No, it will not change it to MPD.
Will the changing of the M one zone surrounding it, will that have any financial effect on the property in the MPD zone, on Bryant?
Well, it, it makes those properties competitive with the MPD as far as offering office uses.
Will it potentially increase or decrease the value of that property?
The MPD?
Yes. With the M ones, with the?
No, because I, no, I don't believe so, because the, the M one, the buildings that are in the M one zone district are by far and large of a different type in construction methodologies than those within the circle area. The circle area tend to be more business park construction, I don't think, kind of apples and oranges.
Councilmember Haney, I would suggest that potentially you recuse yourself, only because the recent amendments to the Political Reform Act generally look at valuations of real property and the effect on real property through the use of a real estate appraisal. I don't have enough information to be able to guide you successfully. I've heard that it probably won't, from the Community Development Director. I respect that, and I think it's good advice. But when you're dealing with the Political Reform Act, the better part of valor, I think, is to indicate you have property in the area, that the value of your real estate may be affected by this. I don't know if it will or won't be. Because of where it's located, it's probably a zero-sum game, and I would recommend that you recuse yourself, and based on that, you'd have to leave the dais.
I do, I do, I will, and I'll see you after this conversation.
Anybody else have questions for staff? No? I, I don't have any speakers cards, but does anybody wish to speak on this item? Seeing no hands, I'll turn it back to council. Any further question, comments, discussions, or I'll entertain a motion?
Comment and a motion. Comment, uh, just to help the public understand all that jargon. We had an inconsistency. It'd been around for a long time. We're fixing it. Okay? Uh, so, I think that's fair. Um, and, so, you know, I'm sorry for all the technicality. I'd like to move that we approve, uh, Municipal Code Ordinance Text Amendment TA fifteen, excuse me?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Wierich, uh, and I may have not have heard it when I was engaged in my discussion. Did you open the public hearing?
I didn't open it. You're right. I closed it, but I didn't open it. I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to talk? Seeing no hand, I will close the public hearing. Turn it back to council.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. I'd like to move that we approve Municipal Code Ordinance Text Amendment TA fifteen dash zero two to modify the city of Ojai's Municipal Code, Section ten dash two point five oh three, Table two point four, allowed uses and permit requirements for commercial and manufacturing zoning districts, M one.
And Ted, if I may, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wierich, and I, I believe that's the version that was put in front of you today, because it added some specific language involving the text.
Yeah. And do you want, wanna include in that motion to direct staff to further, um, change the zoning to MPD? Could we do it in that same motion?
They'd have to begin, they'd have to begin the process to do that.
Okay, so.
That requires its own environmental evaluation and public hearing.
But could we direct staff to do that?
Yeah, you can direct staff to start the process.
And, and I'll add to the amendment, and so direct staff to investigate further zoning changes required.
And, and I will second that, cleaning up some of the messiness of democracy.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Roll call?
Ordinance number, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ojai, California, modifying the city of Ojai's Municipal Code, Section ten dash two point five oh three, Table two point four, allowed uses and permit requirements for commercial and manufacturing zoning districts, and Section ten dash two point three six zero two definitions, TA fifteen dash oh two. Wierich?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Blatts?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes. Next item, uh, item number five, extension of the moratorium placed on the installation of fences, walls, hedges, and screening over the three feet in height in the rear and side setbacks when adjacent to a public or private street and driveway on residential zoned property in this, in the city of Ojai, which was originally item two. I'll turn over to staff for the report.
Ms. Wald will also make a brief staff report.
Yes, I'd be very brief. Um, as you stated, this is the extension of the moratorium on the installations of fences, walls, hedges, and screening over three feet in height in the rear and side setbacks when adjacent to a public or private street driveway on residentially zoned property in the city of Ojai. It's just important that we note that while we're asking you to, um, extend the, extend the moratorium, we are making note that, that city staff is working, progressing towards working on establishing new guidelines as far as these items are concerned with our neighborhood planning process. We will have our first workshop in, in May, at the end of May, and so I just wanted to let you know this part of the urgency ordinance is that we are working diligently towards, um, establishing guidelines for these types of situations, and maybe neighborhood by neighborhood, instead of the general regulations that have been existed, have existed, um, which probably have led to some of the issues that we have, as we continue to have, um, issues with fencing within the community. Just point out that the, the language is as, um, stated in the staff report, and I'm open to any questions.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Haney?
Kathleen, does, um, I understand placing a moratorium on this, we're, we're gonna stop the new construction, but what are we doing right now with the existing walls that, um, are out of compliance, or the existing hedges that are out of compliance, or anything in all in our city boundaries that are out of compliance regarding fence heights and, and, um, tree heights and hedge heights? What are we doing right now?
Well, I can tell you that I, you know, we're given, we sent out a postcard, you know, to majority of the city regarding, um, the two moratoriums that were proposed, and I got a few phone calls on this particular one, and I think people, people are starting to understand, I, I, you know, exactly what's required of them, because, you know, they're, the language went out. I think we still have a lot of education to do as far as, um, letting people within the community know what they can and cannot have. So with that said, um, I think there's a lot of people that are unaware that they have hinges and, and walls and fences in their front yard setback that are, um, not conforming. So right now, um, the code enforcement officer is proactive and moving around the community. He has a rather large, um, stack of, um, compliance issues, and a variety of issues from trailers and boats and garbage in the front yard, fence walls, hedge heights, to, um, leaf blowers and et cetera. It's rather intense, and, you know, he's been on the job maybe two months. I'm not really sure at this point what it is, but he has been working on that. As far as the moratorium is concerned, with, um, fences on the setback, the side setback and the rear setback, you know, we can't abate those people that already have those there, because it doesn't address any of that issue. So as far as a code enforcement officer, unless they really violate what is out there existing, you know, as far as, um, you can play, right now, you can place a, or, I'm sorry, prior to the moratorium, you could place, place a fence five feet back from the property line, as long as you, you stepped it down where you had a driveway or some kind of visibility issue coming out of that, that sides or rear setback. So unless we had a violation of that, which is pretty lenient, we probably wouldn't, um, see too many cases. That's probably not something that, that too many people have violated in the community, although there's some out there that we know about and we're working on. But generally, it's the front yard, which is really pretty significant, and we have a lot of hedges and, um, some fences, and they are working on them.
So, so I guess my concern is that we're gonna review this ordinance, we're gonna rewrite an ordinance, and in the interim, everything that's existing is existing. When the new ordinance comes out, we're all of a sudden gonna change all of the existing and start enforcing, um, as of that time and date? I?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, I guess that's all, that's why we're having workshops for the community, for the community all have input in what they want as a community, and that, and the thought with neighborhood planning is to have input neighborhood by neighborhood. I mean, some neighborhoods want to have restrictions on fencing. You know, we've got, got a lot of feedback from, you know, the Arbelaata neighborhood and how they feel they want, you know, from certain people that are vocal, and I think that's the whole idea, is not for staff to rewrite the ordinance, but for the public to participate in rewriting the ordinance. That's the public workshops. So I don't know what will come out of those. I mean, it could just stay the way it is, but, um, that's not what the public at this point is saying they wanna do. But I don't think anything's gonna change in the front yard. I really don't think so. I think that those are safety concerns, and they, those are pretty traditional with every other community that I've worked in or that I'm aware of, the setbacks. I don't see that changing a lot. And so I think that, that would stay pretty steady and pretty consistent.
Uh, I think what I'm looking at in the change is how we enforce, because right now, we're not enforcing. Um, or if we are, we're enforcing very little, and I don't see how this moratorium impacts that, and I don't see how any new ordinances actually are gonna change that. The rules that we have in place right now are good rules and are effective. We just haven't been in the process of enforcing them for all these years. So I, that's my concern. It was my concern the last time, and that's why I voted no, and again, it's gonna be my concern this time, is I don't see any changes, and I don't see anything that we're trying to achieve through this process that's gonna change what we already have, or what we can enforce or not enforce. So, um, that's where I believe.
So, so generally speaking, over the last year I've been here, the concerns that people have talked about is this issue of what is a front yard and what is a side or a rear yard adjacent to a street. So the community feels that where you have your front door, or where you have your address, or where you have your mailbox is your front yard, even though the code defines it in a different way. So the idea, generally speaking, with why this moratorium was proposed, was because there's a number of situations, eleven oh five, North Signal, and some others in the Arbelaata, where it feels like a front yard to people, and it feels that because that fence can push way out to the pub, to the property line, that it's, um, becoming sort of a compound-like and destroying that sort of open feel of the community. I think that this is what the moratorium was meant to address, and like I said, you know, there's every time in the last year I've been here that we've had fencing issues. It's been on, on a piece of property that has multiple property lines that are adjacent to either a private drive or a, um, a public road, or some such, such situation like that. There are many in the Arbelaata that have three property lines, some that have four, probably some that have five. They're very unusual, we laid out lots, and I think that's what this was meant to address. And I, I just offer that as a point of clarification, because we've spent numerous hours, staff has spent, had to have city attorneys weigh in on the definition of a front yard. We've had to issue memorandum to explain it to people, why people, why people can fence in a side yard and make it feel like a compound, even though it functions to the majority of the public, as looking like it's a front yard. I think that's the problem that has existed, and that's, I think, what's gonna happen here. And I think that perhaps, listening to the community, things may change in that regard, because I think that that's kind of the barometer that we've, kind of the, the pulse of the community is, we've seen it over the years.
Well, I guess my, um, my final thoughts are, this is, um, every time we try to address some, we address something, we've gotta remember we're gonna undress someone. So, um, as long as we understand that going into it, what we may be trying to fix here, we may be creating a problem over here. That's a concern. Um, so, um, having said that, um, thank you for your, for your explanation.
Mayor Proten, Blatts?
Yes, I have a, a couple of comments and then a, a question to Kathleen. The first, the first comment that I wanna make is that we're, the moratorium only has to do with fences over three feet, and so that's not gonna affect anyone that wants to put a fence up in what is considered with no question their front yard, because we allow three-foot fences. It's the side yards and the backyards where six-foot fences are allowed that we're trying to limit, because sometimes there can, what we would consider to be the front yard is technically considered a side yard, so people can put a six-foot fence there, and we're trying to just stop that process for a period of time, so that we can regroup and figure out how we're gonna define those things. Is that an accurate statement?
That is completely accurate.
Okay. So then my next question is, though, is if you wanna put a, a three-foot fence up in your front yard within its proper setbacks, you don't even need a permit. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But if that fence is gonna impact somehow one of our protected trees, then there's a problem with the installation of that fence, correct?
Yes. If you, when I said, yes, it doesn't, the fence itself doesn't require permit, but where you place it may very well require permit, such as a tree permit.
That's part of the confusion, I think, that the public doesn't get. I wouldn't get it if, if, if I was told that I could put a three-foot fence up in my front- yard with the proper setback, and there's a tree there, I'm not going to think about the tree, I'm going to put the fence up. Nobody's going to say, well, but you have a tree there. So how do we, how do we police that? How do we, how do we make sure that that's happening, that people aren't installing what we're considering to be legal fences, but in a way that it's going to impact something like an oak tree?
Well, I think the first thing that we have to do is, we can address those people that actually come into the city and inquire about fences, and we're working towards getting handouts and kind of a frequently asked question-answer type thing, you know? And so generally, we ask a lot of questions of people, you know, so give me your address, where are you located, what's your zone, you know, those types of things to narrow it down, where's your fence going to be located, does it retain soil? I mean, you ask me a question of a fence, well, you know, if it's retaining, well, it's a whole different thing, but maybe you and I might know the difference between the two, and the person might just call it a fence. So we kind of, you know, ask those kind of questions, and then we would make sure that, you know, the person's given the right information. One of the things that we're working on, just as a disclosure, is updating the city's website and making sure that we connect all these things about, you know, kind of the checklist about, well, I'm thinking about putting a fence in my, in my yard, what should I be thinking about, and what can I do and what can't I do? And I agree with you, I think that, you know, it's really part of reaching out to someone. Most people just kind of say, well, hey, look what my neighbor did, and, you know, he didn't get in trouble, so I'll go ahead and do the same thing, and we have to kind of break that tradition here, so we all do that. But I think part of it is making sure that we have handouts, we can answer questions, and that we're reaching out to as many people as we can, and I think we're really working hard on kind of trying to get that information out of there. The next thing would be to have some type of really minimal cost tree, fence permit where everybody has to get it, except for then that just adds another layer of enforcement when people don't do it, and I think, you know, we really want to encourage people and kind of use the carrot rather than stick at this point, and try to get people to realize, and I think just even the outreach we did over these moratoriums, there were some people, like I said, I got calls saying, oh, I didn't realize my fences, my hedges were in violation. So I think we have to make everybody aware first, and that there's lots of avenues, including, you know, our website, to do that, and I think kind of establishing a tree permit, maybe something, I mean, a fence permit may be something someone might want to consider, but it would have to be very minimal cost and quickly reviewed, or people just probably wouldn't do it, I think.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I'm going to open up the public hearing, and I got Deborah Moe.
Deborah Moe, El Paso, isn't that the silliest thing you ever heard, a three-foot fence? I'm a pet sitter. I own a business, made a mock fence, three feet. Every dog that I take care of jumped that fence the minute I walked off. Got a couple of kids crawled over that fence. And I like what Mr. Haney had to say. There's no two fences alike in the Arbolata. In Ojai, you have a six-foot fence here, you have a four-foot fence next door. You can't make people take down their fences, they got permits, or, I don't, I don't, it's absolutely ludicrous, I think. I don't know how we came up with this, but I don't, I really don't see how it's going to be enforced, and I'm really against it. Three feet is, is nothing. And I think if people want to put up a fence, it's a property. That's my take on the whole thing.
Real quick, Deborah, the three fence, the three-foot fence, if you could please hold the applause. The three-foot fence, you're referring to the front setback, right? You're not referring to the rear other side?
Right.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes.
Christine, Christine Baur?
Thank you, Ma'am. Hi, I was here last month, wasn't quite 45 days ago, but it was quite a while ago. I wanted to start out by thanking Councilman Haney for being the only one that showed any sort of discernment on this issue by voting against a moratorium. It was a bad idea when it was originally conceived for just the Arbolata, when we discovered that this kind of wackadoodle idea of having the Historic Preservation Committee be our jurisdiction for how we're going to do things, and you remedied that by saying, well, instead of having it just be the Arbolata, we'll have it be the whole city for a moratorium. It was a bad idea for us then, and it's a worse idea for all of the city. What I'm troubled by is the idea that it was a 45-day moratorium, and then I sat here and heard the advice of council about what that moratorium could turn into, and for those people who were not here at the meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it had the potential to turn into two and a half years legally.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, two years.
Thank you. Forty-five days should be enough time to review the rules that we do have. Thank you very much for stating we have good rules in place. We have a lot of discretion, thank you, Moe, for mentioning. We're a different place in the Arbolata. And as I said at the last meeting, all the animals are already out of the barn, and now you're closing the gate. I don't know how you're going to enforce it, I don't know, I live across the street from people who are in Ventura County, so what I will not or be able to do, they can do differently. I think that potentially could diminish the value of my property, and they're right across the street. I think the enforcement issue is huge. I don't know if you're going to say, well, yeah, we let this person do that, and, you know, it's been there 20 years, but now we're going to have you take it down? Or they don't take it down? Who incurs that cost to have it taken down if it's been allowed to be there all this time? It's a Pandora's Box that got opened up, and again, I thank you for kind of seeing, seeing through that. Sorry, I've got dual glasses thing going on here. I think that about, I think that about covers it. I think Moe hit on a very important part. I have, I'm one of the corner properties that falls into that jurisdiction of where a fence can be certain heights, and I have insurance concerns, I have a pool, so I have to have a certain-sized fence. So who's going to be responsible for that? If my dogs leave the property and hurt somebody because the fence wasn't adequate to keep them in, or the horses, who is legally responsible for, you know, what happens with that? Am I, you know? I just wish you guys would really consider the idea of not doing a moratorium, and I will, I know, let me tell you something real quick. An issue that we had with a neighbor in the Arbolata regarding a fence that was really not in keeping with our kind of family attitude in the Arbolata, brought a lot of this to be. One of the concerns was that it made a blind corner. I went to my neighbor and sat down and mentioned to them that now with that fence and those hedges, we had a very dangerous situation. My neighbor the next day went out with his hedge clippers and cut the hedge back so that it's no longer a blind corner. I think that makes a lot more sense to me than putting a moratorium on all of Ojai. Thank you.
And if you guys could please hold your applause, and the reason why I do it is consistency, I don't want to create favoritism to the person that's studying the stadium for not getting applause, again, if you could please. Jerry Dunn?
Hi, my name's Jerry Dunn, I'm a writer for National Geographic, and my wife, Mary, and I live at 812 El Camino. I'm also representing four people who chose not to appear, so I hope you'll give me maybe 45 extra seconds. You're getting off cheap. In looking at the fence moratorium, I'm just going to touch on two points. First, the reasons behind the recent concerns, which we know some of, and the misguided retroactive enforcement of fence violations that's now underway across the city. The communities worry about new residential fences began at the end of last year in the Arbolata, and residents are concerned about new neighbors who haven't really yet had time to understand Ojai or the neighborhood, and yet we're putting up tall fences rather rapidly after they arrived. The fences blocked views, created safety hazards, as Christine said, and they also brought a kind of unwelcome vibe of an exclusive community, a gated community like Montecito to Ojai. They also violated Edward Libby's published original vision for the Arbolata, which was to be an open park-like area. An example we all know is Libby's historic Arbolata Gatehouse, where new owners erected a stone wall in front that is so tall even I can't see over it. And on, on the quiet country lane outside, they've hammered in a sign that says, no parking, violators will be towed. This is on a road about eight feet wide that virtually no one goes on. So, I think Edward Libby would roll over in his grave about this new kind of alien urban sensibility that may arrive as refugees show up in Ojai from awful urban environments. The second point is what I would call the attack of the regulators. A couple of months ago, as we know, this, the council authorized Community Planning Director Wall to hire an enforcement officer. Ms. Wall told me today that his job is to randomly roam the city, days, nights, and even weekends, looking for code violators. This has a nice feeling, doesn't it? Among the violations that homeowners must fix, she explained to me, are front fences, walls, and hedges higher than three feet. And I answered, I'm confused, doesn't the fence moratorium apply only to new construction? "No," said Ms. Wall. "Every violating hedge, wall, and fence in the city will have to be cut down to three feet or demolished to conform with the code." "Wait," I said, "there are hundreds and hundreds of potential violators. Some tall hedges and oleander bushes have been in place for decades, aren't these things grandfathered?" "No," she explained, "because you can't grandfather something that is illegal in the first place." She said, and I quote, "They all have to come down, the city is going to look very different." But isn't Ojai beloved as a kind of green paradise with country charm? And whose fault is it if there are existing walls and hedges higher than three feet? Not homeowners, because the city has never informed homeowners about these codes and regulations, and the city has utterly failed to enforce those code regulations for many years. So the result is that homeowners have invested time and money on improvements like greenery and walls, and if there was a violation there of some code, they never knew it because the city never notified them. Now it appears that the city council has changed its mind, they're going to enforce the rules and do it retroactively. But who is going to pay in every sense for the city's inconsistent and perhaps inept behavior? It's us, the homeowners and the people of Ojai. Here are a couple of questions. How much of the city's scant budget now goes to enforce retroactive violations, infringements that were effectively permitted by the city through its lax enforcement? How much will it cost when homeowners sue the city over its rear-looking code enforcement and the damage to property values? What about the safety of children and dogs? Both can easily get over a three-foot fence into the traffic. So I'll put my points, one and two, together. A while back, some Arbolata residents expressed concern about fences going up in the historic neighborhood, but instead of acting on that one issue, the city council overreacted, and now we have this absurdity. There's an officer who's punitive enforcing regulations that the council itself could well rewrite in the next 10 and a half months. You're going full speed on this, but I think in the wrong direction. So please, if you're going to take nearly a year to reconsider your code regulations, do the same with your enforcement, take a step back on the policing, and come up with a well-considered coherent policy that's enshrined in clear regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor, Mayor Pro Temblats?
I've got, I've got a couple of questions. One is, first of all, this moratorium has no effect on the enforcement, that's a totally separate issue.
Right. What I said to him was that the moratorium doesn't affect the front yard, so violations, the front yard regulations, three feet and lower, has been around forever, and that, you know, we currently are enforcing that. That, that's, that's the question you're asking. So no, it doesn't, I mean, the moratorium is side and rears only, so there are two separate issues, you know, forcing hedges and walls and fences that are in the front yard that are over three feet, we're doing that currently. There's no effect on that enforcement activities.
But again, I just want to emphasize, there's nothing in this requested legislative action that has anything to do with enforcement.
No.
Nothing.
Uh-uh.
So, it's a totally separate issue, the enforcement, and this only has to do with new construction.
Correct.
Okay. So with that being said, well, I'll make a comment later on what I think we ought to do about enforcement. Now, the, the, the question that I would pose to that last speaker is that I guess that his idea is that there should be no moratoriums because there should be no limit on the size of the fence, even in the front yards. That's my guess, and what we're doing is we're saying, we're going to allow the code as it currently exists, and it has existed for quite some time, at three feet in the front yard. That's no change than it's been for years and years.
Correct.
Okay. We're just saying, we want to take a look at it because of the definition of our front yard and side yard.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any more speakers cards on this item with, yes, Carol Smith, and then I'll get the two in the back.
Thank you very much, I'm Carol Smith, mayor emeritus, and councilman emeritus for 12 years. We never.
That's all right.
We never allowed more than three feet in the front yard. If people have moved from communities expecting more than a three-feet front yard fence, they should move to Palo Alto, Malibu, I don't know where, but part of our community ethic is that people should be able to engage with the public, should be able to see a house from a front yard. I don't even know why this is an item. This is on the law. The law is no more than three feet. If they bought a house that has more than three feet, and we now have a full-time enforcement officer, it should be enforced. If the real estate agent did not say that the hedge fence, the wood fence, whatever it is, is more than it should be allowed, then that's the fault of the real estate agent. The law is no more than three feet in the front yard. Rich people who move here and they want some kind of, what shall I say, fortress, that's too bad. I lived in the Arbolata for many years, my front yard had absolutely no fence. My backyard did, my side yard did, but my front yard was open to the public to see. If you don't like that, don't move here. Thank you.
I saw two hands in the back, could one of you step forward, on the one on the edge first, and could you please state your name?
Again, my name's Jeff Costello, I want to reinforce something that Randy said. How are you going to enforce it? We have zoning laws on the books. I, there's, I have a neighbor, I don't know that they paid attention to any of them, and yet sooner or later, there'll be, there are unpermitted structures, or structures that are within the five-foot setback, will be, they'll pay permit fees that they should have paid, and they will have what was not allowed, they'll have it. Someone said to me, the zoning here is a joke. I have a garage I converted, and I was required by permit to put a carport in. My carport was about six inches into the 12-foot setback, so I had to move the, redesign it a little bit, no big deal, which I did. My neighbor has a structure within the five-foot setback that's, I think, wasn't electrified originally, is now, and since you're going to go to your, the transient rentals, I'm pretty sure it's used for a transient rental, because their driveway is, according, the neighbor on the other side could tell you how much. could tell you how much traffic they have. So if you can't enforce the zoning laws, don't pick up another law that you can't enforce. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I saw the second hand. Yes, please.
Hi, how are you? I just wanted to point out that you might want to investigate some of the residents...
Could you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm Cindy Convery. I was here last council meeting. I thought you'd remember me. But...
I do, but it's for the record and people at home.
I know.
Because actually, a lot of people do listen and do see it.
Well, I just wanted to point out that one of the residents who presented himself as an Arbolata resident, talking about fencing, actually doesn't live in the Arbolata. It was Bob Daddy. He came in on February 24th. He started his comment with this sentence, "Hey, last week, two great new tall fences went up right next door to me. The fact is, in October, his neighbor, his new neighbor, put up a five-foot fence within code on the side property line. Three months later, maybe three to four months later, I live across the street and down the block, I put up a cedar fence on my side yard, which was, it's thirty feet back from the street, and it's actually three feet below street level, so the fence is sort of two and a half feet above street level." So he presents this claim that these two huge fences went up within a week. Not true. He proceeded to state in February 24th, when he was here, that he thought there should be a fence permit for every fence, and there should be no height variances for any fences. I just want to remind the council, and Kathleen, you didn't live here at that time, in 2012, Bob Daddy, who's the chairman of the Board of Appeals of Building, built against code a thirty-foot-long block wall on the curb in front of his house. It's not like he didn't know what he was doing. The city made him take it down. All the residents complained. He sued the city, and he won on the fact that his fence did not need a permit. On February 24th, he requested that all fences have permits. His fence was also, he needed to get a variance for the height. His fence was over the, it was four to five feet on the three-foot height level. He did get a variance, and the fence is partially still there. The curb is five-foot blocks, and his driveway gate is four feet high. So I really think you need to look into these people who are speaking here. Do they live in the Arbolata? Are they telling the truth? Did they get what they want three years ago, and now nobody else gets it? You know, what's the motivation? Thanks.
Thank you. And then, yes, I'll have you first, and then...
My name is Gina McHatten. I live on Drown in Ojai, and we are not rich. House poor, in fact. I mean, I don't know ideas of people moving here that are rich. Yeah, I have two mortgages, and I, you know, that's what we do to live here. We looked at other communities, you know, and we would go to a community, and all the houses would look the same, and we'd be like, "Well, I don't want to live there. I want to live in an eclectic community of different types of people." And the thing about Drown is, you'll have houses with beer signs hung in the window and really strange, and then you'll have this million-dollar home across the street and everything in between. And some people have fences, some people don't. When I was a child, my, we had a three-foot fence. We had a home. It was in Burbank, and somebody stepped over the fence to come to our house and assaulted my mother. I was home. And I didn't want to own a house. I didn't want to, I wouldn't be able to get up and just go if anything ever happened. But when I decided to buy a house, I had perimeters, and one of the ones was, I wanted a gated property. So on Drown, I have a gated property. It's not that tall. It's probably this tall, but it's above. It also was previously owned by a bank manager, so she had installed all Dragonchunk security, and it's, I feel safe there. My children, my puppy that we just got, that we wouldn't probably, when they did a yard check, would not have given us the puppy if we had a three-foot-tall fence. But I think that you start talking about Arbolata, you start talking about all these rich people from LA, you know, it's like, it's not like that, especially in our little side streets like on Drown, where it's very eclectic. And I don't mind the beer signs, and I don't mind the, all the different types of people that live on that street, because that's what makes Ojai, Ojai. And I want my children to know all different types of people. And I think one of the things that's kind of strange about this, the size of the fence in the front, is how people have changed over the years. We are social media, we are modern people. I'm obsessed with the arts and crafts era of the big wraparound porches and everybody communicating, but the reality is, is my husband works sixty to eighty hours a week. When we come home, we like to close those gates. We like to be a family. We like to be, we're home, and we're safe, we're in our little world. And we're not millionaires. We're just regular, middle-class people that have been out in the world all day. Our world is all very insular when we choose it to be and not when we don't choose it to be, because we're all connected now through the internet. You're more likely to speak to everybody through social media, through Facebook, than you are to sit there on your front porch and wave to your neighbor. I just think that the, what we look forward to in Ojai is the eclectic uniqueness of it and the artist communities, and I think that that would really change if you start policing everyone to feel like we have to conform. So somebody's idea of being welcoming and waving at your neighbor is something that's a choice. It's not something that has to be a requirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I saw your hand go up, and then I saw a couple of hands go up in the back, so...
Mayor Pro Tem Blatz, could you...
Oh, please. Could you please state your name again for the record?
Sure. My name is Jim Richmond. I'm a resident of Ojai. I just want to caution the city council on this enforcement notion. There are all over the city, front fences that are higher than three feet, and there are a whole host of reasons why that is the case, but they've been in place for a very long time. And if you start enforcing that to existing fences, I think the lawyers on the council will know, that there'll be litigation over changed circumstances, and you will be in court for the rest of your lives. I would suggest that if you want to make the environment of Ojai a comfortable, welcoming place, that you ask the enforcement officer to enforce the thousands of leaf blowers that are blowing at decibels well over the code requirement, as I understand it. Those are not enforced, and you can sit in your beautiful Ojai yard with no fence, and you can hear those blowers going twenty-four hours a day. So if you've got an enforcement officer, give him something important to do. Don't get him to go out and ruin property values. And by the way, I also welcome successful people from LA to come to Ojai. They come to Ojai, they'll be happier, they'll help the city be successful, and we want them to come here. They're successful people, and successful people are to be respected just as hard-working, less-successful people are to be welcomed and respected. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that note, seeing we're respected, could you please, I urge you guys to respect everybody that comes up to the diocese. I don't want, I just want to hold that demeanor. And I saw a hand up at the end.
Thank you, Mayor. Gil von Driska. I live on Oak Street here in, just right downtown. I just want to follow up on, a thank you one, it's actually a follow-up to a leaf blower one. I actually had, one of the first notes we got was a leaf blower notification, which I appreciated greatly. And I called the code enforcement officer to tell him that I appreciated that. And that's where it starts. I think a lot of this is symptomatic of not having codes enforced in the past. And now, here we are, you know, with people that have had long-term fences and all of a sudden there. But maybe it's the military part of me and being amongst for twenty years that changed that. I mean, there are, we moved to Ojai, and I specifically to live in city limits, because codes are important. Codes protect my property value, and if everyone follows the rules, it's, everyone benefits. I came from a part in Washington State where we had six acres, fortunate to live on six acres, but my neighbor decided to open a shooting range and a motocross track. Because there's no, there was no noise limitations, and actually, there weren't any limitations on that. So when I came, when we moved to Ojai, which we're so fortunate to be here, that was part of it. I wanted to be in city limits because it was code, there were noise restrictions that were in it, but the key is enforceability. And I thanked the council for hiring that individual who left that nasty gram on my door, and I thanked him. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else willing? I see a hand on the back, and if you could please state your name.
Good evening, Council. Scott Iker. I live here on the floor of the valley. Just something to consider. About an hour ago, when you were talking about planning commission protocol, the, I believe it was, I don't know who it was, said, "The times have changed, and perhaps we need to take another look at these pre-meeting meetings. And perhaps times have changed, and we need to take a look at the zoning ordinance about hedge heights and fence heights in the front yard." Just comment.
Thank you. Anybody else? See no hands? I'm going to, did the last one, yes?
Can you please provide clarification on something?
Yes.
Thank you. Christine Bauer. I'm unsure about what was stated. Mr. Blatz, you said that this is only relative, relevant to people's front yards, that they have to be three feet. Was that correct? Well, what I would like for you to consider, coming from the Arbolata, which is, you know, my concern, is that some of the properties are such that the front yards of a few of our neighbors are, they're bordered on two sides by other properties, so their front yard fences is what keeps everything protected on their property. So if there's already a fence that's been built that's high enough to accommodate keeping the animals in, and it already has, let's say, hedges that have been there in an excess period, are you saying that the code enforcement man will now be able to go to those properties and tell those people that they're in violation and have to take their front yard fences down?
Well, first of all...
That's what we need clarification.
I'm not, I'm not saying anything about that. The only comment I made was that what's before us tonight has nothing to do with code enforcement.
Well, I believe I wasn't hearing things when we were talking about the three, well, then maybe I could get the information, because I heard a lot of talk, and I'm still, I'm not sure. So if one of my neighbors happens to have a fence that's taller than three feet, that has existed for the twenty years that I've been there, are they subject to having the code enforcer come along and tell them they're in violation and taking their hedges or fences down? That's what I need clarification on.
Yes, it's a different, it's a different topic, but yes. It's a different, so it's not on this item. Code enforcement, we got to, and we could, we could put this, probably it sounds like there's been enough excitement in my mind to agendatize this item so that we could bring it forward and give some clarity. I know that if it's not on the agenda, we really can't talk about it because we don't give the public the opportunity to come and voice their opinion. This is just for the side and back adjacent to a driveway or adjacent to a street or driveway that you can't build higher than three feet. That's just addressing that issue. And the front, it's not addressing, that code has been in books for a while, and along with so many more that probably need to be looked at. But we need to agendatize that item in order to talk more about it. So, and if you have further questions, you could, feel free to contact staff for clarification or anybody.
Thanks. I was just a little...
Thank you. I'll take one more comment, and then I'm going to close the public hearing.
I wish I wasn't back here, but here I am. Michelle Thomas, 1125 Del Prado Court. A plea, please, please don't turn Ojai into Irvine. Oh, my God. Homogenization, codes, help me. That's not why I live here. I could have moved to Irvine. I chose here. Thanks.
Michelle, can you explain what you mean by that? We're hearing comments about...
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I don't...
What I'm hearing is code enforcement. Everything has to be three foot. Everything has to be this way, a certain way, and there's a guy running around night and day, finding things to enforce? I'm frightened. Big Brother's here. Ojai's going, eclectic is Ojai. That's the Ojai I moved to thirty years ago. I mean, yes, safety concerns. If you've got a pool, you've got to have a seven-foot fence around it. You should, if there's, I mean, if a hedge is built so high that there's a blind corner, of course, that's very important. But other than that, I don't want Ojai to all look the same. That's not why I live here. It's beautiful the way it is, and that's, I don't really want to stay on this. It's not, I mean, but it all kind of dovetails into the same thing.
No, and it's, I could see the relationship, and I could see the confusion, and again, I...
I'm just frightened.
Yeah. And to be honest with you, again, these codes have been here for a long time.
Well, no one ever enforced them in the thirty years I've been here.
Exactly, exactly. But we'll agendatize this item, we'll make it clear to the public.
And to think that people will have to take down things that have been there when they bought their property, you know, come to think of it, I've always had a six-foot fence against, around my backyard. Am I being illegal? My dogs jump regularly into the Lobles' house over the six-foot fence, so, you know...
Well, again, I don't have the liberty to go into that, even though it is interesting.
I just wanted to comment, please, keep Ojai un-homogenized. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. One last comment, that's it.
She said something about workshops. Are they going to be on websites to know when they're anywhere?
Yeah, okay. All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to turn it back to council for further question and discussion. Councilmember Wierich?
I want, there's, interesting, I have, my mind has been swayed by listening to everyone, I must say. I remember something when I first took this position and listening to Mayor Pro Tem Blatz a number of times about, you know, try to keep an open mind and listen to what everybody has to say. And I, I've taken all in. I want to make some comments and tell you the benefit of my thinking. This was motivated by a situation where arguably the intent of the code was to prevent the walled-in Ojai and be a form of an open porch Ojai. And so, for years and years and years, there's been this limit of three feet on frontage, fences, hedges, and walls. It's always interesting to read the code, believe me. And when you actually read the code, that's what it says. Frontage height limit for fences, walls, and hedges. Now, obviously, that's not what we have, and there seemed to be a, there was a, beginning to be a flurry, the people were perceiving, that because the code seemed to intend that along a street, we weren't going to have a, create a walled-in look with six-foot fences, that maybe we have a problem with the frontage definition. And therefore, it got into a situation where, well, could we maybe fix that in some simple And then it has morphed into what I heard tonight, in terms of a direction that staff is going, which is to take a while for this moratorium to be in place for a long time while we figure out how to have different rules in different neighborhoods, which I have a concern over. Because in my mind, the issue of enforceability only becomes magnified if you start having simple rules, which we obviously had trouble dealing with in this community for years, and we're going to start having different rules in different neighborhoods for fences and walls, and that usually is associated with more permits and more reviews and more costs, and I'm concerned about going in that direction. So I voted for this moratorium initially, thinking, well, that's a chance to maybe fix a more of a simple problem having to do with maybe the frontage definition not conform... a more of a simple problem having to do with maybe the frontage definition not conforming with the intent of the, the code in the first place and allowing fences to go up six feet where people were, this fly's been here all night, walking, you know, that pedestrian experience that is part of our character, being somewhat eroded by having tall fences going right up on, on a public rights away. Well, it, it seems to me we're going in a different direction, and I have a concern about that. And in, in terms of the idea that we're going to have all these different rules for all these different neighborhoods, which has been one of my concerns with this neighborhood planning in the first place in terms of, I like the idea of neighborhood planning in one respect. I don't like neighborhood planning in the respect that we just complicate zoning and code even more. It's the largest section of our codebook by far right now. And as far as enforcement is concerned, yeah, I, I think there's a real problem in trying to just start wholesale, start cutting everything down to three feet in the front yard, although I do agree with the intent of that sort of front porch logic in our code. I, I agree with that. I don't think we want a walled-in community. But on the other hand, I think code enforcement always needs to look at compliance first. Council directed that the first thing was compliance and education before we started getting into punitive actions. And third of all, I want to just point out that I think from an enforcement action, I certainly, as an individual council person, would certainly like to see public safety issues addressed first, where you've got a, say, how many times have you come up to an intersection in Ojai and you couldn't really see the traffic coming because the hedge was too high on the corner? Let's, you know, common sense, okay? That's where we need to have three feet, where you can't see the traffic coming. So I'm, I'm feeling, I'm uncomfortable with the direction of 10 months. And, and so I, I'm, I'm having some problems supporting this.
Just a point of clarification. We could always end the moratorium. That's, that's always a possibility of ending it at whatever time council chooses. Going back to what you mentioned about dealing with safety and, and the community. And I think that's part of the reason why this was brought, because of a situation that rose and that people are saying that they were having safety issues walking through the driveway. This is, that was the trigger that put this moratorium on. Would you still have an issue with dealing with that? I, I know we talked about neighborhood planning.
Well, I believe the code, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I believe the code right now is very clear about line of sight and three feet on how we are at intersections, I believe. Very clear. That's already there in the code right now. I, I would, I, I'm uncomfortable with going in the direction of this moratorium with what seems to be the staff's approach of coming up, studying this for a long time and coming up with different rules in different neighborhoods, as opposed to coming up with simple, more simple approaches that, and I just, that's why I'm uncomfortable.
Well, we could always direct staff to focus on this then in terms of safety as a council, if we choose to do that. That's, that, that we don't have to necessarily buy into the fact that this is going to be handled in neighborhood planning. If we, as a council, feel that that's not the right approach, we could always direct staff to do differently. Any other comments, questions before Mayor Pro Tem Blatts?
I have really three problems with this. The first one is, I can understand us having to, to probably look at, look at side yards and set, set front yards from a definition standpoint and to, to stop the, the issuance or the installation of fences for a short period of time. For us to do that's fine, but I, I'm just not in agreement with it being for a period as long as this. The second thing is I have a real problem. If we're gonna have any moratorium on the installation of fences, I have a real problem with us not having a moratorium on the enforcement against the existing fences. The only way I could support a moratorium on this, and I don't even know whether it's possible, Mr. Howard, is if we tag to this a moratorium on any kind of code enforcement against existing fences in town. And then the third thing that I'm hearing tonight is that I'm not getting a real sense from the community like we, like we, we were getting an outcry on 1105 North Signal where it was a community, a portion of our community outcry on the six-foot fence that was put up. Uh, I'm not getting the sense that a lot of people have a lot of problem with the fences that we currently have. So I think we need to address the, the issue of the fences in the first place. And I may be a minority because the issue of three-foot fence in the front yard setback has been in the books for years. And I have a feeling that the majority of the council probably thinks that's a good thing. But we're here at the, at the pleasure of the, of the community. And I'm not getting the sense of outcry that people are screaming and yelling about people that currently have fences over three feet right now in their front yard. So those are my three issues. And I don't know how to, I mean, I could go along with supporting this moratorium if there's a way to tag a moratorium on any kind of code enforcement against existing fences.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mayor Pro Tem Blatts. Unfortunately, because of the way this item was agendatized, we can't include an administrative stay, if you will, or moratorium on code enforcement. As you might recall, you separately addressed the issue, for example, of a stay on code enforcement related to the M1 zones. When that issue came up, we dealt with that separately. Certainly, you could put it on a separate agenda and deal with it, and you can deal with it rather quickly. Likewise, I think if staff heard a majority of council noting that we have some real concerns about how aggressive code enforcement might be related to walls and fences, I have a feeling staff would take that message and perhaps look at other areas and other items to address first until the item is heard by the council. But technically, we can't include it within this particular agenda item. The second point I need to make, and again, it's strictly legal because I have no dog in the policy hunt, so to speak, is that once a moratorium under 65858 of the government code is terminated, either by its terms or by voluntary action of the council, that's it. There's no look backs and say, we made a mistake. Well, let's reenact it. Unless you have distinctly different facts and circumstances upon which to base a new moratorium. So just to bear in mind that if you were to say, if you didn't have the four-fifths votes tonight, there's essentially the moratorium, I think, expires by May 8th. Just know that if it expires, that's the end of this moratorium. And as the mayor noted, even though it's for 10 months, 10 months and 15 days, that's the maximum permitted. Uh, the council has its discretion to terminate that moratorium at an earlier date anytime it so chooses to do so.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? Council member Haney?
I, I just want to close with this. I, last week I flew into Tennessee, 5:00 in the morning, and I didn't see one fence. Not a fence. And I was at my really good friend's house in, in Tennessee and Nashville. And, and what was interesting is they still put the houses next to each other. They're on four-acre, 15-acre, 20-acre parcels, and they gotta be 50 feet apart. But there's no fence. So I go to Lua. It just kind of amazed me. It shocked me. And he goes, Randy, not everyone lives in California. The same thing in Pennsylvania. There's not a fence in sight. And the same thing where I ended up in Dayton, Ohio. Not a fence in sight. It's a California issue. It's an Ojai issue. And we can solve this. I wanted to bring the, I just want to close with this because there's a, something I want to read real quick. And then, and it has to do with not just the fences, but it's gonna have to do with the other topics we're gonna talk about tonight. You know, the, the second unit dwellings and, and vacation rentals. I just want to read this. The, the nature of all conflict is that something is out of balance. I think we can all agree on that. Something's out of balance, whether it's fences, whether it's three-foot heights, whether it's... The solution is created by an open and honest debate where both sides are heard. The solution is then found. The solution then is to find remedies that create a balance. So from this point on tonight, we're gonna be talking about what the balance in our community is going to be. Creating winners and losers is not creating balance. It's pretty simple, huh? So I ended it with saying, right now, until we strike a balance in our community, and then I put regarding vacation rentals, second unit dwellings, fencing, okay, we're not gonna have balance in this community. So we need to hear each other speak. We need not to point fingers at one another, and we need to have an honest dialogue about how we feel. And from that, we're gonna create the solutions that this community wants.
Council member Wyrick?
I just want to suggest that, well-chosen words, and I think the right remedy for balance in this point is that we not proceed with this extended moratorium, but to go think about how to change if we need to the fencing ordinance in proper, in normal order in terms of amendment to the ordinances.
Council member Clapp?
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't want the wallification of Ojai. I don't think anyone up here does. I think we can achieve that through maybe reviewing our current ordinance. I, there's all sorts of violations of the free foot fence in the front, too. There's all sorts of creative ways that people are gaining privacy. I think we'd like to be connected as a community, but we have a lot of really narrow streets. And people don't honor the speed limits. So if you're on a narrow street, it's a cut-through street, and you don't have a lot of setback in your front yard and you're in a narrow lot that's only 50 feet wide, and people are going 45, 50 miles an hour up your street, it's noisy, you know, you want, you do want privacy. So, you know, there's so many issues about this. This is not, it, it seems simple. That's the thing about all of this stuff. It always seems on first look just simple. And then when you start digging in, it's just like when you're remodeling a house, you know? You start tearing something out and you think it's some simple job, and the next thing you know, it got rot you didn't expect. You have to tear out more. Similar thing, whenever we look at these things, we think, oh, this should be a piece of cake, you know? And the next thing we know, we start digging into it, and it just becomes this Pandora's box of, of just confusion. And I think we can figure out how to solve it. I agree. But I don't think we need a moratorium. And I don't know how to address the, the code enforcement issue. I've just never been that passionate about this issue, honestly, though I don't want the city to become walled in.
I, I, just to finish the comments and to wrap this up, I, I do want to say that since I've observed council and then this is my 30th of being on council, this has always been an issue, fencing. And that's why I feel like we had to bring this up. However it came up, I appreciate your guys' comments because it has varied from time to time, from issue to issue, before I was on council, when I was on council, and so forth. And, and, and the, the idea behind neighborhood planning is not necessarily to develop codes, but to understand how our neighborhoods are developed. That's the whole idea of neighborhood planning. Because there's a lot of things on the books right now that are not being abided for whatever reason. And I think the council just recently hired the code enforcements with the direction of education because we do want to see what issues come up first so that we could figure out how to handle it. Now, why, they do seem simple, but there's due process, and that's why we live in this country, because nothing happens quickly. And we need public input. So I, I, I say that it seems like the direction of this council is, obviously doesn't support this moratorium, but to look at fencing and bring up a different item and maybe not enforcing our current, our current ordinance and looking at safety issues in our neighborhood that has to do with fences, hedges, and walls, and also, uh, public input. We need public input. I, I think that it's gonna be controversial, even though it's a simple issue. It is very controversial, and people are passionate about either their hedges or walls or not having no hedges and walls. And we do have to have that honest discussion that previous council members have already alluded to. So I think that if, if, I will entertain a motion and go from there. If, if, if it, if it, no motion, then it dies and we move on. And we'll agendas, we'll bring this up as a different agenda item.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to ask the, ask staff, do we need a motion or just, do you just need direction?
So on, on, on the moratorium or on enforcement? On, on the moratorium?
We have to bring it up, right?
On, on, you're, you're not in a position to take action on enforcement? But I'm very reluctant to tell people to take out fences that have been sitting around for a long period of time unless council directs me to do that. We, we would really focus more on safety issues, you know? If, if a hedge is growing in such a way that it blocks vision on a corner, we'll, we'll react to it. But I don't think we're gonna go out and farm for, for violating fences. On the moratorium, if you want to extend it, you need to make a motion. But if there is no motion, as you said, just move on.
Do I hear a motion? Here, no motion, the moratorium ends tonight.
Let, just make it, make it clear, the moratorium itself doesn't end this minute. This ordinance is an extension of the moratorium. The moratorium now will die based on its own terms on May 2015.
Okay. All right. Any other clarification? I'll move to next item. Next item. Look at my notes. Item number six, moratorium on the issuance of conditional use permits for transient rentals in residential zones. I'll turn it over to staff for a report.
So we're on, I'm sorry, which, which item are we doing?
We're on number six. Which, which used to be three.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, members of the city council, I'd like to just go over a little bit of the history of this before we talk about the moratorium. So this, this current version of looking at transient rentals really began in January when council members Wyrick and Clapp came forward and asked for permission to start a process to try and understand what community sentiment is on transient rentals. And they've had a couple of meetings with a group that's broadly based to talk about that. And then recently, they reported to you that, that they'd like to proceed with a broader community workshop that's led by a facilitator. And so we've been working together, interviewing facilitators, and hopefully we'll have one in place soon so that that workshop can proceed. In the meantime, in March, council discussed setting a date by which we would begin enforcing the current regulations which prohibit transient rentals in residential zones unless you have a conditional use permit. And the council voted to start that enforcement in 90 days, which is June 8th. And there's a separate item on tonight's agenda talking about enforcement. Then subsequently, at the March 24th meeting, the council adopted an urgency ordinance prohibiting the issuance of conditional use permits for new transient rentals. So based on that moratorium, we currently would not accept an application for a transient rental in a residential zone. That moratorium was a 45-day moratorium, similar to the one you just discussed. And if you want that to continue while this process is going on, you would need to adopt a moratorium to extend it. And that's what's before you this evening. So unless you have any questions, I think that's a summary.
Any questions or comments? No? If there's no questions or comments, I am gonna turn it over to, when opened the public hearing. And I will start with Ma- Ma- Chi- Ma- Kee- Tempe? Oh, Michelle Thomas. It looks nothing like it. I'm sorry.
So I'm Michelle Thomas. I live in Del Prado Court. I made the mistake of picking up the Ojai Valley News. I was trying to take a vacation from all of this. I was appalled that we're still talking about leaf blowers. And then I read further and discovered that my fellow citizens are going to be fined. I mean, this whole thing's going on, so I do have a prepared speech. I've lived in Ojai for 29 years. I see our community becoming more and more unaffordable for middle-class working families and homeowners. I feel it's un- I feel it's unfair to have a moratorium on permit applications while you're imposing fines on our citizens that are struggling to afford to live here. It makes no economic sense to me. Allowing applications and collecting bed tax, it seems to me, would give far more money to our city than imposing a $500 fine. A moratorium essentially forces citizens who are trying to find a way to live here into becoming outlaws. I've heard in many council meetings where we're decrying the shrinking population of school-aged children and young families. They can't afford housing here. This proposal also effectively turns down an opportunity to promote infilling of developed space. It stymies mixed use in our community. What it does promote is development of our precious open space to satisfy our pressing need for low-income housing. And it also does not promote tourism, which is a clean industry, and I believe is where we get most of our money from here. I find the regulation of what people do in their own homes intrusive, but that's my opinion. But worse, I think this fine and this moratorium effectively means only wealthy people can afford to buy homes and live in Ojai, and only wealthy tourists can afford to come here to visit. I personally do not want to live in an elitist community, and that's what I see us turning into. These walls, these code enforcement, all this stuff, it's all the same thing. It's about us responding to increasing population, more people wanting to come here, and we're looking for ways to deal with all the pressures. That's it.
Thank you. Pat McPherson?
Pat McPherson, North Montgomery, in Ojai. I get the feeling the previous speaker was putting multiple things together. It's my understanding this pertains to daily overnight rentals. Is that, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, it has nothing to do with affordable housing, right?
Yes.
We're talking about rentals.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I bought my house in an R1 zone because I didn't want to live next to a business. I didn't buy a place in the village mixed-use or other areas. I live in a residential area, and I've lived there for 30 years. Vacation rentals, motels, are not currently allowed in R1 zones. Period. And it hasn't been since I bought my house. If I want my grandchildren to play in the yard, I don't want to worry about a sex offender coming in on a night for a next door. They have to register in the house, any house next door to me today. A fine of $500 is insignificant, considering what these rentals can get. I think we should have $2,000 minimum and index it to the cost of living. The people that are breaking the law today, and they are, and we're giving them a position, or even recognizing them as a good citizen, and they're not. They're breaking the law. It's that simple. What they're doing, they know they're breaking the law. What got brought up, and the previous person in what's been some of this discussion, is when we put in a granny flat. Now, granny flat, I think, is a great thing to promote affordable housing. But the fact that somebody has one, I don't think they should say, well, because I have one, I want to rent it out when I'm not using it. Thank you.
Carol Smith?
Thank you very much, Carol Smith, 23 Terramine Lane. I bought in an R2 zone. An R2 zone means that I know my neighbors. I know the people on my left, my right, my whole street. If, in fact, my neighbors are beginning to rent on Airbnb, or on, what's the other one, VRBO, and they have strangers coming three, four, five, 20 times a month with suitcases, and renting rooms in that house for one or two nights, basically, I have lost the privileges of my R1 or R2 zone. Also, the neighbors who are now renting rooms every night for $150, $200, God knows what, or granny flats, are making probably $5,000, $6,000 grand a month on their private R1 zone. They are against the law. They are basically negating my value of my home. I bought a house in R1 or R2 so that I could have, know that I know my neighbors. Not that strangers with suitcases are coming in on the weekends. To me, that's extremely important. Our town lives on TOT, transient occupancy tax. If it is a fact that we have 100% occupancy on our legitimate bed and breakfasts and hotels all during the week, then we need to build more hotels, or allow more hotels in our village mixed-use, commercial zones. But R1 and R2, I'm sorry. Even if you have focus groups, and 51% of the people in that focus group say, yes, I want to have hotels, I want to make my house into a hotel, and I want to rent rooms by the night, 49% of those people you represent have said no. Majority, this is not, we do not have a direct democracy. You are voted in by the majority of the people, but you're expected to make rules that benefit the whole city. You cannot ignore the 49% that said, no, I do not want hotels in my R1 or R2 zone. We live on TOT. You all know that. Many of these people do not pay into the TOT system. They have decided that their home is going to be their commercial income, and I cannot even tell you how wrong that is. Many communities have many sources of income. We are absolutely 100% tourist-bound. If our hotels and motels are 100% full seven days of the week, then we need to look at legitimizing more hotels or motels in the mixed-use zone or the commercial zone, or allow for their construction. To allow private people to rent out rooms by the night, collect that money, and I assure you, they, most of them do not pay TOT, and they do not pay the taxes on that income, is illegal. And it devalues my rights to, basically, because I bought in an R1 or R2 zone, to have a hotel, motel, whatever you call it, next to me. Even if I only represent 1% of that population. It is wrong. It is illegal. I did not buy in that zone to have a hotel next to me. So, please, respect that. Thank you.
Rex Kewell?
Coachell.
Coachell?
Yeah.
Coachell?
Well, I'm a resident of Ojai. I live on Signal Street. And if you think fences are a problem, you know, no fences are the same, someone once said. I think you're going to find a lot of the, what we call vacation rentals, will be quite different, too. My wife and I have one. The circumstances under which we have it is quite unusual. We made, like a lot of people, investments in the 2008 recession, pretty much down, you know, killed us. And my wife and I had to move away from our house and live with a friend in Port Wainimi for almost three years. And during that time, we rented the house out, and we had a person in the back, and we have a granny flat. And so, we had two people, two different parties renting our house. We were thinking about moving to Oregon. We made a trip to do that. Finally, since all my children, five of them, are within one hour's drive of Ojai, and I'm a member of the Ojai Studio Artists, and I have a studio on the house that was renting, we tried to make a go of it, and that's what we've done. So, this summer, we renovated the place in the back, which is a granny flat, into a beautiful vacation rental. And we've started renting it in December. And we've, matter of fact, I want you to know that in some ways, I see us as ambassadors of Ojai, because I'm a retired teacher, and I'm there on the property. And we show these people, we have a notebook about where they can go and what kind of things are available in town. We allow pets, which a lot of places wouldn't allow. Our space is private, and I printed up some of the, they're not obligated to write comments, but I printed up some of the things that they wrote, and I'll pass these out. People are loving the experience, and we've, quite frankly, I'm on a set income, and my wife is on social security. If we cannot rent that property, we have to sell the property and move. It's just that simple. I mean, we're financially obligated to a huge mortgage that we can't get out from underneath, from the thing that collapsed. I know that bed and breakfast places, excuse me, I mean, vacation rentals are quite a controversial issue now all across America. There was an article in the LA Times about someplace in Los Angeles where a motel complex has turned into a bed and, I mean, into a, you know, vacation rental. And the guy who lived there on a permanent basis said, I can't tell who's coming and going. And perhaps it reflects some of the comments they've just made about hotels. Our place is nothing like that. And I would think, before talking about regulations, you know, you're kind of moving forward on a moratorium on fences, and now you're rethinking it. I think issues of vacation rentals, which you call transient rentals, which seems kind of strange to me. It sounds like transient, it's like a homeboat or a bum. We have, I had a, our guest from Connecticut was the law professor at Yale University. We've had people from Wisconsin. We've had people from Maine. You know, we've had, we have classy, incredible guests that park at our house. And because we're close to downtown, they can walk everywhere. I know that the comments that came in a bulletin that I was made aware of said that the current and immediate threat is to public health, safety, and welfare of the community to have a vacation rental. I find that difficult. Perhaps, I don't know, about all of the facilities that you're looking at. I mean, there may be some places where people have a vacation rental that is a nuisance in the community, that the neighbors are complaining. Ours is a quiet little, sort of place of heaven in our backyard, and we get, only can have two people come. And it's absolutely incredible. People park at our driveway and walk most of the time, all over town. And it's been a terrific experience. We chose, by the way, to make our little place in the back a vacation rental for several reasons. One, we can actually make more money than if we rented it full-time. I don't think it, we had it rented full-time when we were out of town. And the people that, one of the parties lost their job, and for three months couldn't pay the rent. And we're still struggling with that. We decided if we made a vacation rental, we could also have a place where our family could come. So, like Thanksgiving, we don't rent it. And we have our families come in and live in Ojai and share the property with us. So, it's, you know, it's a multiple use. We can use it for our families. It's our property. It's our place. Or we can make it available for people that want to come to the community.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll give you, you know.
Yeah, if you could give them to our city clerk, and she'll pass them around. Well, thank you so much. And I just want to remind everybody that I have a good amount in the speaker's card. So, if you could please limit your comments to three minutes, that would be greatly appreciated. Randy?
Hi. Hello again.
Hi.
All right, before I start, I just want to say that Councilman Blatts, I didn't say something that wasn't true. I didn't lie earlier. You weren't at the meeting. I really respect your insight and what you say at this meeting, and the others that I've been to. And I respect you, and you have an amazing reputation. And I don't want you to feel that I'm someone who doesn't tell the truth. I mean, I had no idea what the Brown Act was before, before I, that meeting. And so, I feel disrespected.
Okay. I apologize for that. I'm not, I wasn't trying to, in any way, impugn you in terms of what you may have thought you heard. But I still find it hard to believe that anybody would say that they have these meetings to circumvent the Brown Act. Now, that may be the perception you were left with, and the perception you were left with is what you truly believe. I just, I can't, I mean, I just can't even fathom anybody saying that. So, I, you know, if you want to get in touch with me on other hours, and give me the name of the person that said that, I would be more than willing to look into that.
And I appreciate, I don't want to get into a discussion. I want to stay on topic. Because, again, we have a lot of, we have a lot of speaker's cards, so.
Of course. I just didn't want to feel that I had a strike against me already with this event.
And I never, I never took it that way.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Sorry.
You could proceed with your comments.
So, with what I say right now, will that affect me? Could that affect me or someone like me in terms of a fine of $500? Or am I putting myself in jeopardy by talking right now?
I'll defer to the city attorney, but at the same time, this item that we're talking about right now is a moratorium on issuance of conditional use permits for transient rentals in residential zones. It doesn't talk about any fines, doesn't talk about, we do have an item that deals with enforcement, and that's, again, I'll defer to the city attorney for that.
Mr. Mayor, that is 100% correct. The item right now before you is the continua, is the extension of the moratorium on the issue of CUPs for transient or vacation rentals. There's a separate item addressing fines, and I couldn't answer the question under either of the items, anyway, because I don't have any facts. But as we discussed in the last item, transient rentals have been unlawful in this community for many, many years. And the council has indicated that as of a date in June, we're to begin enforcement. I'm not going to advise the individual of his rights, and I'm not going to advise him that he's got a right to remain silent in the Fifth Amendment, et cetera. So, I couldn't answer yes or no of whether or not anything he says would lead to.
If I were to say that I had experience with vacation rentals, would that, I mean?
We'll assume that you had experience.
That's pretty broad, and I would say that's vague enough not to.
Okay, I appreciate that.
We'd like, Randy, we'd like to hear about your experience.
We'd like to hear about your experience.
We'd like to hear about your experience with vacation rentals.
Okay, I appreciate that, Councilman. So, for several years, we've had, we live on Tico. We have had several years of experience with vacation rentals. I can say that right now, just looking in the valley on one of the websites, there are over 150 vacation rentals advertised. It's a huge economic impact for the community and for people. We have, you know, occasionally, once or.
Sorry, I know there's people, multiple conversation fleet. The council could also respect the people on the, I guess that would be great.
We were trying to, I was trying to identify Tico Road as being in the city.
It's near Palomar Foothill.
There's a little stretch, yeah.
I'm in the city.
Yes, thank you. Sorry about that, Randy. I apologize for the interruption.
Okay, so, we may, one, any given month, we may have no rentals. We may leave for a weekend to visit our folks in LA and have that as an opportunity to host other people in our home. We have goats. We have chickens. I milk the goats twice a day. I have to get home and milk the goats because this meeting has gone on so long. But I give that, this sort of Ojai kind of farm experience to guests who come, and I'll show them how to milk before we leave. And it gives them appreciation of this beauty of this, of the place where we live. It helps the community, as I said, tourism. It helps the shops, businesses, restaurants. I look at, I don't just accept, you know, anybody who comes. They have reviews, references. It's my, it's our house. We don't, I mean, we're very selective of the people who we allow in there. We don't, I mean, we're very selective of the people who we allow in there. And at any rate, it employs cooks, cleaners, landscaped architects, gardeners, painters. We want to make our house look good. It gives us an opportunity to fix up our place once a month or whenever, so that we can get the good review from the guests, so that other guests would be interested in coming. Because a bad review would be terrible for us. And Airbnb, it doesn't, it affects, or at least in our, in our instance, families come. People with kids, they come. People who wouldn't necessarily want to stay at a hotel. We have two kids. When we travel to a vacation destination like Ojai, we don't want to stay in a hotel. We have to rent two rooms or all huddle in one, in one small room. A kitchen would be nice. It allows for a wider variety of tourists that would otherwise come here. And I talked to somebody who manages vacation rentals on Maui, actually. And they worked for years to develop a vacation rental ordinance. And she actually recommended, Austin, Texas, has a short-term rental ordinance that has a license fee of everybody who wants to apply. They pay a hotel of $235. They have a hotel tax of 9%. They have inspections when they want to apply and they, to be a vacation rental. They have area caps. They have to provide proof of insurance. All of that is in this ordinance, which I'll give you, so that you can possibly use it for your...
Yeah, and if you give it to the city clerk?
And I gave the city manager that the email as well, so you have it there privately.
Well, thank you, Randy. I appreciate it.
I also want to say that if you can, okay, vacation rentals in Ojai aren't legal now, I hear. And, but you may issue conditional use permits. Well, I say that if you can issue conditional use permits, that wouldn't, people who get that permit would still have to, have to go under the conditions of a future ordinance, I'd imagine. And it's still, the conditional use permit could still allow for inspections to make sure that everything is legitimate, that someone isn't gonna, that if there are complaints, it could be canceled, you know, by the neighbors, so that, I'm sorry, I'm kind of not that clear. But let me just say that there's no, as far as I can see, there's no reason for a moratorium on conditional use permits, because it's not legal unless you issue the conditional use permit anyway. And that's a discretionary action, I'd imagine. So there's no reason for a moratorium.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Barry Betlock?
Mr. Mayor and councilpeople and staff, I am Barry Betlock. And I have had the good fortune to live in the city of Ojai for 20 years. And without worrying about self-incrimination, I can say I have never rented my house to anyone. But, that having been said, I got this little gem. And I started looking at it and it started making little sense to me. It was, I read it and it said that the purpose of this moratorium, this extended moratorium to March 27th, 2016, was a situation that was going to be used for the purpose of providing time to develop regulations. Once again, we're on the subject of moratoriums. Why you need all this time to develop a moratorium on a subject like this, this is an old subject. Granted, it's been growing in intensity. There are more and more of these vacation rentals going on, not only in Ojai, but as other people have pointed out nationally. And I dare say it's going to continue. So we can, say we can ignore this or not. We can say it's illegal and maybe you're going to continue to do that. But the fact is, that's a popular part of the culture today. And I was disturbed by some of the earlier comment that was made implying that there was some sinister motive for those of us that would be desirous of short-term rentals. I wouldn't report my taxes, I do terrible things. That's not true. I live in a neighborhood that if I was a nuisance, believe me, I wouldn't be living there today because the people wouldn't put up with it. That's the kind of neighborhood I live in. And I would not inflict that kind of thing on anybody. If I do this, I'm going to do it maybe on a weekend here and there. That's what I'm going to do. And I'm going to do it because of the same reason the gentleman that spoke earlier talked about, which is I need some extra income. This little debacle that we had with Golden State Water, I'm glad, thank God, we're moving in the right direction with that, don't get me wrong. But that's another bill that's going to come due for those of us that are, had the misfortune to be under them all these years. And I would just say this, I wanted to add that it's my understanding that those people that are against this vacation rental, transient rental, call it what you like, one of the reasons they're against it is because they're concerned that it's going to change the character of Ojai to some degree, because it's, there's so much of it going on. And you know what? I think that's a legitimate concern. I really do. I understand why people are saying that. And those people who have been subject to living next to neighbors that are slobs, that are loud, you think the Grateful Dead have reappeared, next door, you know, that's not right. But that's not a function of just transient rentals. That may be the guy that lives there normally or the month-to-month rental. I mean, that can come from any place. So, you know, but there's one thing I think that trumps all of this. And that is simply this. Article four of the United States Constitution, the Bill of Rights, about people's rights within their own home. And I think when you go in and start saying, "You can do this," and I don't mean saying I'm going to regulate this, I'm saying, "You can't do this at all. It's in the privacy of your own home, but you can't do that." I think there's some serious questions that are raised there that you're going to hear from different quarters before this is all over. And thank you for letting me make my statement.
Thank you. Sherry Stuckey?
Hi.
Stuckley or?
Stuckey.
Stuckey.
Restaurant in the south. But I don't own it, so. I'm a Realtor. I've been a Realtor since 2004. So I've seen the ups and the downs. And myself have experienced the down quite blatantly on my own home. So when we had the collapse, many of my clients had purchased very expensive homes and they couldn't afford them. So this little cottage industry developed for vacation rentals. And I know that a lot of people aren't happy about it because some of them are poorly managed and they create a lot of noise and traffic and whatever. And I completely understand that. And I think that that could be addressed with an ordinance and proper management. So I'm not here to talk about the negative aspects of them, but what could be positive? From my own experience, I've handled about 500 transactions throughout Santa Barbara and Ventura County as a representative for people who have vacation rentals. I myself use them when I travel. I go to Cambria, if any of you have ever been there, you should go try a vacation rental. It's really lovely. And it's a much different experience than a hotel. Side note about the hotels here, they are booked, they're usually at 100% capacity and you can't get in. I have clients drive up on Friday and I try to drive them around to a hotel and they can't find one. So I just drove somebody last Friday to five different hotels. She ended up having to go to Ventura. So I would have let her stay with me, but just that night wasn't working. So anyway, I have five points. And I attached the copy of the Cambria ordinance for your files to review. That ordinance addresses traffic, noise, neighbor disputes, and several other things, including taxes and licensing. First point, transient rentals generate revenue for the hotels, local businesses, and could also do that for the city of Ojai if they were to collect occupancy taxes from licensed vacation rentals. So I believe that if there were a procedure to pay, people would. And if there were a procedure to follow, people would. Properly managed vacation rentals serve the community by providing needed housing for family and friends, creating a more vibrant participatory community. So many of the folks that come here are actually associated with locals. Like I've had very prominent citizens within Ojai ask me if there's a rental that they could use for their family, for a graduation at Thatcher, or, you know, they're in for the tennis tournament, or they have a wedding. So it's auxiliary, it's like the Ojai Village. It's not just people from the unknown. It's people who live, are family members of the people in Ojai. A third point I'd like to make is that the property owners themselves will spend more money on their property, maintaining it, beautifying it, and also making sure that it's very well-managed so their neighbors won't be upset with whatever they're doing. And that creates, you know, revenue for all the local service providers, including, you know, cleaners and maintenance people and gardeners. And then before, we had an issue with insurance, because they couldn't properly insure these vacation rentals. Most standard insurance companies won't do that. But there is now a company that will do it as a commercial thing and provide insurance for folks. And so anyway, I just wanted to give you those notes. And also let you know, if you ever go to Europe, it's pretty common there. So it's just part of what's happening now.
Thank you. And if you want to give those notes to the city clerk?
Sorry.
Oh, they're already undyed. Never mind. Jeff?
Let me paint you a little different picture. I have a property. I can convert my garage to a bedroom with a bathroom. I don't think it's permitted. I can convert my studio, I'll put electricity in it, I can rent it. I might put in another bath somewhere, but I don't think it's permitted. I can convert my stable to a place where I run my schools. I have one, I have a couple of businesses. I have a pool, so I teach swimming. I have pottery and I teach, make pottery. Don't forget the teepee. I put up a 14-foot teepee on a wooden platform. I would give you a better description of it, except the 10-foot fence that was put at the back of my yard, so I wouldn't look into that yard, precludes me from doing that. But the guests park their cars in my driveway, one of which I parked behind a fence, so maybe other people won't see that there's three cars there instead of two. And I park my van on the weekends in front of the house on the street. You're talking about a hedge. There's a, I come out of my driveway, there's a car, and then there's a van from there to there. And I can't see up the street at all. But I asked the person to not put the van there, and he said, "You better get used to it." The woman who left early lives on the other side of this house. It's where the driveway is. Thank God I don't. And that person, when there's several rentals, and I don't know how many they can, they really do, but there's more than one at a time. And so people come and go during the night. And maybe because your bedroom's up against your driveway, which is cheek by jowl with their driveway, you hear, when people come and go, they come, you hear them. And usually people, the people that they're renting to, because a converted garage with a bathroom is probably not as nice as that gentleman's rental, are not quite the same. So you get a lot of traffic. In the end, if you're going to approve them, I think one of the things you need to do is inspect and make sure they're all up to, up to this code and not enrich illegal dwellings. Also, I think you need to have a bureau or a person where you can file complaints. Speaking to these people doesn't change things. They're not necessarily bad people, but they're not unique. They have found a way to make money. And you know, so you understand that they're not stuck with a house that they were over there, underwater in, because they bought it when it was, when put on the market by the lending institution. So I said, "Think about the other people that live around these. Renting one unit is different than renting three." I didn't buy my house and expect it to be next to a motel. And just think about other people like me. And I think Ms. Smith's comments about, I live in an R1 and she, and I expected it to be that way. Well, somebody has to say to people, "I'm sorry, if you built this motel in an area where there'd be motels, it'd be fine." But it's not fine next to people who didn't expect it to be there and expect it to be protected by you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Jan Nicole?
Jan Nicole, 33-year resident of Ojai. I live on Canyada Street. I first responded to an agenda item on the June 24th, 2014 council meeting regarding transient rentals in residential zones. And I spoke at that time to the number of short-term rentals in my R1-zoned neighborhood and the impact on residential integrity. I fully supported the recommendation for the planning commission to hold public hearings. In January 15th, six or seven months later, evidently, we're starting to gather some information. The question I'm asking, the moratorium you're asking to extend is for issuance of CUPs of the potential 38 violators identified last June. Not one has come forward to ask for a CUP in order to come into compliance or to apply for a CUP. So why have a moratorium on something that nobody wants anyway? I guess it all comes down to enforcement. Until public hearings are held and a new ordinance is drafted, I strongly urge the staff to enforce the regulations that are already in place. Aggressively identify violators, serve cease and desist orders, and closely monitor. Please protect the integrity of our residential neighborhoods, my residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, real briefly. I would like the city attorney to maybe clarify the CUP process. And do you think you could help explain this? Because it's a bit, I think there's some misunderstanding about what this is about.
As I understand it, given, it's an interesting code in Ojai.
This is very important.
Transient rentals are prohibited. Transient rentals are prohibited. There's a provision in the code that allows a planning commission to issue conditional use permits for similar uses. And if a similar use finding can be made, then the planning commission can issue conditional use permits. Hence the reason, as I understand it, when the council first acted to authorize enforcement of the code, again, that regulates or essentially prohibits transient rentals, staff began to receive calls from individuals who were seeking, possibly seeking conditional use permits, which then drove the council to the next step of considering a moratorium on the issuance of conditional use permits. Not that they would be granted, they are discretionary permit that would have to be heard at a public hearing before the planning commission. And the planning commission would have to make findings to grant it. But this, the matter before the council is to essentially continue the moratorium on the issuance of a conditional use permit. So if somebody applied for a conditional use permit, had the right facts and circumstances to present to the planning commission, the planning, under this moratorium, that couldn't occur. If that helps.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor Lar, there's a point of order, it's 10:30, and we need to take a poll. Do you want to continue the meeting?
I was going to do that after the public comment, but we did, we do have a rule in the books that states that we can't start another agenda item after 10:30. So we could finish our current one, but we cannot start a new one. And obviously, in the past, we've voted if we want to proceed with another agenda item. But it takes the council to... but it takes the council to unanimously agree to consider the following items. So, is there any, the pleasures to the council? Yes?
I would just like to say, my preference is that we finish this item and adjourn.
Okay. And then, we'll table item number seven and eight. So, just for people that are here for seven and eight, we're not going to bring that item until the next meeting, those items. But we'll finish this item.
Mayor Lar, I need to ask the city attorney a question. Do we need to take, or the city manager, do we need to handle the RDA warrants, successor agency warrants? So, that would be the only other item?
It's okay to carry this over.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, that's a small matter.
Okay. Judy Murphy?
Mayor Lar, council, staff, I'm Judy Murphy. I live on Grand Avenue in Ojai. Southern California has an affordability crisis as housing prices and rents have outpaced income and job growth. Most Californians can no longer afford their rent. As a member of the Ojai Affordable Housing Committee for the past two years, I've become painfully aware of the lack of housing units that are available in Ojai for people of modest means. That means that fewer young people can afford to live here. That means that we don't have their families in schools. That means that they're not volunteers in our community. That means that businesses, like the medical industry, or grocery stores, or other local businesses that serve the people who live here full-time, are not being served. Now, we're talking tonight about short-term versus long-term rentals. If you buy a property, you can put it out for long-term rental, and that's fine. That will help bring young people into town. But, this spike in short-term, or vacation home rentals, decreases the number of available housing units here in town for long-term rentals, for young people. So, to prevent more investors from turning our housing stock into mini hotels, in residential zoning, no less, I ask the council to create restrictions on short-term rentals and enforce the moratorium on them until new restrictions can be considered. This is a very complex subject. It is not something that we can really figure out in a week or two, or even a month. We've heard a few of those restriction possibilities tonight. They would include things like a permitting procedure, the room tax collection procedure, some onsite hosting or speedy problem resolutions, onsite parking requirements, noise rules. But most important for me is to put a limit on the number of days that you can rent out your house. That way, homes are not turned into hotels. It would actually help people who are planning an investment, who plan to come here and buy these houses, to turn them into short-term rentals. If we have a moratorium, they'll be put on alert that they shouldn't make an investment that the community might very well decide isn't appropriate for our community. So, I'm in favor of the moratorium. Hope you will do it.
Thank you. Jim Richman?
My name is Jim Richman. I'm a resident of Ojai. Most of the points that I wanted to make have been made. So, I'd just like to say that I want to compliment you on the level of discourse that took place today and tonight on very contentious issues. And I thought it was a very respectful discussion. And I want to thank you, the councilmen, on establishing that level of discourse. As for this issue, it is clear, as Councilman Haney pointed out, balance needs to be struck. And as Councilman Clapp pointed out, no issue is simple. But I would say this, that both sides have points, important points that need to be respected, and a thorough ordinance and permitting process is appropriate. But balance is important. I'm, hopefully, will not need to rent my house out or my guest wing out. I don't think I'll be in that situation. But I am certainly concerned about those in the city who get into that situation and need the income. Mortgages are expensive, and people go through cycles in their lives, and they need sometimes to step up and find another way to support themselves. And so, an ordinance needs to be respectful of that issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve Colisi?
Good evening, Mayor Lar and council members and staff. I look at this transient rental stuff, vacation rentals, transient occupancy, or long-term rentals of units that are here in the valley as a business. If you look at the hotels and motels that are in the valley, or in the city, or the bed and breakfasts, or whatever, all these people, as far as I know, have to have a business license. They have to meet certain health and safety standards that the city has set up, and they have to pay transient occupancy tax out of whatever rental funds they get from using the property that way. I see no reason that people who do the same activity with a piece of property on their lot shouldn't have to meet the same standards. They should have a business license. They should pay transient occupancy tax. And for the health and safety of the people who might rent, long-term or short-term, any of that property, they should be meeting, the people that own it should be meeting health and safety requirements. Beyond that, I see no reason why we should put other restrictions on these people. I don't have any property that I would ever consider renting, short-term or long-term. I do, however, have on my block one homeowner who has what started out as a granny flat, I guess you'd call it that, and I believe is now used on occasion for transient occupancy, vacation rentals, weekend evenings, or whatever. I believe that these people should have to meet the same general kinds of standards as people that are in the business, that are other people that are in the business of doing short-term rentals or long-term rentals. And I think that that should be the end of the restrictions that we put on it. This moratorium says, "We're not going to allow you a permit to do this particular activity." And the corresponding item that was on the agenda here was, in fact, "While we don't allow you to do this, if you, while we will not allow you to become legal to do this kind of thing, and in the meantime, we'll fine you $500 presumably for each violation." This is way over the top in terms of government getting into our lives. Now, health and safety, equity in taxes, and standards of the business, and having a business license, all seems to me putting people on an equal footing with others that are in the same business. But beyond that, I think you ought to leave us alone. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any more speaker cards. Anyone in the public wishes to speak? Yes. Could please state your name?
Good evening. My name is Otis Bradley. I live in Ojai. Council and mayor. What an exciting meeting. You guys have your plate full with zoning issues. We've got an industrial area, which is now being converted to business, which may have CUPs or may not have CUPs. We have unhappy planners. We have people fencing and other people. We have trees. We have houses that are getting shorter, roof lines are getting shorter, and we have no more Ojai Frosty. And now, we have transient rentals. I have to say, I'm a little confused. I was here last month, and at the end of the meeting, when this moratorium was put into effect at the end of the meeting, there was some discussion about public forums. And since that time, I received in the mail a notice, which I guess all of town received, but it says that, moratorium on fences, we've already talked about that. It says there's going to be a moratorium on transient rentals in residential zones. So, that's different than what we're talking about tonight. So, I'm confused about that. Then, I also received an administrative report here, which is dated April 16th, which is in between the time I was here last time and this time. And it seems there were a number of items discussed at, I'm not sure what kind of meeting it is, but I don't think it's a public meeting, where there are many sort of judgments that I'm not sure are made, in fact, were made. And then, I come here tonight, and we have this item, and we also have another item, which is a fine. I haven't heard anything about a public forum, which I thought we were going to hear about. But regardless of whether there are good transient rentals or bad transient rentals, and I'm sure there are both cases, I personally happen to know several, four families, for a matter of fact, who have started out here in transient rentals and now have bought houses and have become members of our society with kids in our schools. As a matter of fact, one of those guys is in the process of trying to build a non, what do we call McDonald's in those?
Franchise?
Pardon me?
Chain store?
Chain, a non-chain hamburger joint, right here in town, the Ojai hamburger joint, which hopefully will replace the Ojai Frosty. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for clarity, that postcard that you got, it is regarding this issue, the moratorium issuance on conditional use permit?
But that's not what it says.
For transient rentals in residential zones?
It says moratorium on transient rentals. It doesn't say moratorium of a CUP.
Issuance of CUP. Oh, it doesn't clarify that?
Correct.
It was in the body. It might be in the context of the postcard. But that was the whole point, to get everybody to communicate to the public that this was happening.
Well, I'm disturbed at the pace at which it's moving and the fact that, also, I'd like to make one other comment. I think it's completely unfair, and with all due respect, that a past mayor can sit in this meeting and make inflammatory comments, and then sit in the back here and catcall and make comments about other speakers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, two more hands, and then we're going to close the public hearing. If you may step to the dais, to the podium, sorry.
Linda Styes, Ojai. There are just two quick things I wanted to say.
Could you move the microphone?
Just a couple of quick things that I think people didn't say. I met with a bunch of other owners recently, and we were unanimous in agreement that we would gladly pay the transient occupancy tax if there was a way that we could pay it. If you would let us get our permits, our business licenses, we would all collect it and pay it. We could start right away. Also, most of our places would not be suitable for low-income housing. They're just not, you know, I'd probably have to get $4,000 a month, and that's not a very low-income house. I think that's all I had to say. Oh, about the fine. We all have reservations coming up for the spring and the summer, and if you're going to fine us $500 a reservation, or a night, or whatever you have in mind, and we have to call our people and cancel, or else we have to pay the fine, we have to call the people and pay the fines and cancel their reservations. They have weddings planned, they have plane reservations, they have family reunions, they have lots of plans. They would never come back to Ojai again, so it would be really bad business for Ojai if that happened. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, we had another hand.
Gil Von Driscoll, East Oak Street in Ojai, Ojai resident. And I am in favor of extending the moratorium. Some wonderful points were brought up on both sides, which was educational to me. But at the end of the day, I think it comes down to proper, I think the rules come, you know, being in proper business, if that's what this is. But the question is, how do you then balance enforcing? And this is what the issue you guys are tackling, and I appreciate that, as a council tackling these tough issues that have been around for years. I've been here seven years, visiting for 20. And I think, to Councilman Haney's point, it is balanced, but how are you going to balance those that are following the rules, those that are kind of following the rules, and those that aren't? And it's, that's the tough balance, and that's, those are tough lines that are drawn. But I appreciate you tackling the issue, and I'm in favor of extending the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to turn it back to council. Councilmember Wierig?
Again, I try to make it a habit of explaining my thinking. And I want to say a couple of things about, first of all, the community workshop has already started on this issue, which is, I think, wonderful. I think it was interesting that, and part of the motivation for Councilman Clapp and I to start focusing on this was precisely to start this process of how do we have, how do we handle vacation rentals within the character of Ojai? It's a community choice. What we had was a situation where there was no regulation because there was an expectation of non-enforcement for activity which was not allowed in residential zones. And that kind of expectation is corrosive of good governance. This is how it should work. And so, I want to explain my thinking on all this because we are not going to adopt any fine tonight. Let's be very clear about that. All right? That's, this is going to be the last issue tonight, and this does not include the fine. I am anticipating that we're going to be scheduling a workshop very soon to continue this, to address this complex issue, and that we're going to have time to revisit the entire issue of the date for lifting of the suspension and the issue of the fine. It's going to be at a future agenda meeting. So, the only issue tonight is continuing the ban, or the moratorium, on accepting applications for conditional use permits. And this is why I think it's important to continue this moratorium. Number one, a conditional use permit is not a license. I have looked at probably two dozen vacation rental ordinances all over the state of California. Not a single one regulates whatever regulation we want to do. Nobody does it with conditional use permits. Nobody. And there's some very good reasons for that, because a conditional use permit doesn't attach to the person operating the vacation rental. It attaches to the property and goes forever with that property, and you cannot revoke it easily. And it becomes very difficult to include a proper regulatory process with a CUP as a tool for regulating vacation rentals. Most, everyone, every city I've seen with it, that seems to be the best practice in, in fact, the League of California Cities did a workshop on this, and they advised, "Don't do it with a conditional use permit." Because of all the problems that that entails, it makes it very difficult, for example, if somebody doesn't follow the rules about vacation rentals, to revoke their license, because it's not a license. All right? So, what I want to say is, I don't, I will never support, and I don't think it's a best practice to regulate vacation rentals with conditional use permits. I think that we do not want I think that we do not want to even start loading up staff with processing these applications. There is a solid legal basis for regulating vacation rentals in the community. We need to figure out how to do it. I think the process started tonight. It's been very educational for me. But we don't want to create a property right with a conditional use permit, and I think that ultimately, this is not going to be part of our regulatory regime. And so, I'm going to vote to continue the moratorium.
Anybody else on the council wishing to speak? Mayor Pro Tem Blatts?
Yeah. I, when this issue first came before the council a year ago, and it might have been two years ago, it's not the first time it's been here, that's for sure. I made a comment that before we started to look into regulating these vacation rentals, the council had to come to a decision as to whether or not we were going to allow them in a residential zone at all. And we still haven't done that. I can tell you that if we do allow them in residential zones, as Councilman Wyrick just said, we're not going to regulate them by CUPs. So, the moratorium on issuing CUPs is, sure, it's a moratorium on allowing any new short-term rentals, transient rentals, vacation rentals, whatever you want to call them, they're typically rentals for less than 30 days. So, we're not going to do that by a CUP. We haven't decided as we need to, and we need to do this as quickly as possible, is to decide whether we're going to permit them in residential zones. So, it wouldn't be fair to somebody to allow them to get a license and start operating, and then all of a sudden, if it's the pleasure of this board to stop the, say they're not allowed in residential zones. So, I really think that probably the only vehicle we have at this time is the moratorium. I typically don't make my mind up on anything till I have a lot of public input. And tonight, I wasn't listening to, I was absorbing a lot of people's comments with regard to transient rentals. But we weren't here to say whether we were going to permit them in a residential zone. And I'm, I have an idea of the way that I feel, but that's not for discussion item tonight, therefore, I'm not going to necessarily make a public comment with regard to that. But I do think that the moratorium is probably the only vehicle we have at this point to accomplish what we need to do, and that's just, let's just stop everything till we can come to a final conclusion.
I agree. Councilmember Haney?
I guess I have a couple of questions. First of all, Mr. Clark, do we have any vacation rentals with CUPs right now?
We have one.
Okay, so we have?
The Emerald de Gooine.
No.
Isn't it the Emerald de Gooine?
That's not a transient rental. It's a bed and breakfast on Ojai Avenue.
Oh.
It goes back to 1985, I think.
Okay, so it was given a long time ago. I think the issue that, this is what I'm hearing. I'm, I'm not sure if this is a business issue, or if this is a zoning issue. And I'm hoping that in your workshops, that that's determined. Because if it's a business issue, it might be easy to resolve, and it might be easy to be inclusive. If it's a zoning issue, it's going to be a bigger issue. I just think it's going to be a bigger issue. So, I think we need to clarify that somewhere, sometime in your workshop, you know, what it is, okay? And I think that that's the fear that's out there tonight, is that the folks that do have them fear that from this day forward, someone's going to be out knocking on their door and trying to impose a fine on them. And that's been clarified tonight. There is not going to be any fines. But it's also very clear that the city council isn't condoning what's going on out there. So, again, we're right back into the gray. So, for that reason, I can understand that we don't want the CUPs being, the rationale for businesses being able to operate in a residential neighborhood. It'd be like a good friend of mine suggested, "Would you like the car wash next door to you? Would you like a gas station next door to you?" You know, "Where do you stop what business someone can do in an R1 or an R2?" So, and I understand that, and I think that's a clear question, and a viable question. What do we want? So, the moratorium to me is kind of like, "Let's just do it, because it doesn't actually mean anything." We're not allowing them, we're not going to do them. In fact, it almost tells me, "Why are we even doing the moratorium?" But aside from that, so I'd be inclined to say yes again to it. But also, I respect the fact that we have clarity tonight, and I hope the folks that do have understand that they need, to understand that that may change, and to come and talk to us, and go be a part of this workshop. And both sides come to the workshop and talk about how we can create this balance, and how we can create this community that wants to work together and strive to be a whole community, not a community of haves and have-nots. So, that's where I stand.
Any other comments from council members?
No. And just to clarify, again, we're not deciding on the fee, because it's not on the agenda. We're just deciding on the conditional use permit for transient rentals in residential zones. I look at it just as a step to make sure that we're, we allow the process to function without any potential of complications, and I support this moratorium. So, I'm happy to hear, or if there's no further discussion, do I hear a motion?
When are the workshops taking place? How can people know about those?
I'll explain that. We're in the process of interviewing facilitators, and we are, there's one more proposal that's coming in that we're going to be reviewing, and I anticipate that we'll be announcing in the very near future when the workshop will be.
And we're going to widely publicize it.
Yes, it will be very widely publicized.
And we really appreciate your comments. We all listen to them. If you want to write them down and send them to us, you're more than welcome to do so. And, but we are...
Can I just ask a quick clarification? Are we only discussing R1 and R2 in terms of?
Yes.
So, that's really the only issue?
Yes. Well, no, on this, on this item.
Yeah, R0.
On this item. On all residential zones.
All residential zones.
All residential zones.
Which means?
R1, R2, R0.
Not VMU.
Not VMU. Okay, so...
Again, under...
So, I'm going to bring this meeting back to order. I hear a lot of side comments. So, I just want to remind people that we are still in session, we're trying to wrap up this item, so we could all go home.
Yeah, and again, Councilman Haney, motivated by a desire not to have staff loaded up with CUP applications that they need to process, that would just be, I think, counterproductive at this point in time.
But that's why I'm in agreement with you.
I'm going to, I'm going to offer, move approval of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Ojai, extending a temporary moratorium on the issuance of conditional use permits for transient rentals in residential zones in the city of Ojai, and declaring the urgency thereof.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Ojai, extending a temporary moratorium on the issuance of conditional use permits for transient rentals in residential zones in the city of Ojai, and declaring the urgency thereof. Wyrick?
Aye.
Clapp?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Blatts?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes. And item number seven and eight will be tabled to the next meeting, and we will, right now, take a recess from council, and we'll convene as a redevelopment successor agency. I have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
My second.
Wyrick?
Aye.
Clapp?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Blatts?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes. And I will reconvene as city council. City council, and I will take reports from council members. Any reports? We're still in the middle of the meeting, so I appreciate, if you guys want to dialogue further, or have conversation, if you could step into the...
Can I ask one quick question? I'm sorry, I'm feeling really uncomfortable leaving without asking. There was a conversation about something starting on June 8th, as far as...
Oh, yeah, if you could come to the podium, then, so that people in the public...
That's just my question. What is going to happen on June 8th? There's enforcement action that's starting, then what does that mean?
Well, we're going to bring that item to the next meeting, so it'll be before June 8th, so you'll get an answer at that meeting.
All right. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to proceed with our meeting. Any reports from council members? No? I just want to say, I went to the Ojai tennis tournament. Fabulous, great turnout, enjoyed it, and I appreciate all the volunteers that really put an effort to make that day hap, or that tournament happen. Other than that, I have no reports. Or report from city manager?
So, I have a $3 million good news item. And I'd like to thank all of Mr. Howard's former colleagues in Glendale. The city of Glendale prevailed in Superior Court in a case that overrules the way the Department of Finance has been dealing with redevelopment interest rates. And our oversight board approved an interest rate which would give us a loan repayment of $5.2 million over time. The Department of Finance had given us a haircut down to $2.2 million. So, if this ruling stands as it goes through the process, we stand to gain $3 million plus interest over time.
That's great news.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I anticipate the DOF, the Department of Finance, is probably going to appeal it, because essentially, you're finding that the life rate is a variable rate, and that the interest rate that was incurred at the time the loan was taken out has substantial impacts to them. It's great for cities, but it doesn't bode well for the state and the Department of Finance.
Thank you.
Yeah, remember, the money that they, the money that they...
That they got, you know, included it. So, I mean, it's not as though they're having to pay for it. I mean, they're just, it's how much they get to keep. Right? And I don't believe our oversight board has to take any action, because we've already done it.
Right. We're done. Our oversight board supported it.
Yeah, so...
Great, thank you. Any report from city attorney? Chief of police? Nope. Any department heads?
You know, city...
Our city clerk?
No.
With that, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.